Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to call to order the city council meeting for the city of Wheatridge, Colorado for April 27th, 2020. In a moment here you will see the American flag show up on your screen and when it does we will go to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Sorry, this is Jesse. I can't share my screen.
Hi again Jesse, sorry, my apologies.
Just a moment, okay? If everyone would please stand as you are able and join me for the pledge allegiance to the flag. Just a moment, okay? If everyone would please stand as you are able and join me for the pledge allegiance to the flag. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the clerk, will the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Ms. Hoppy.
Present.
Ms. Hutchinson.
Here.
Mr. Urban.
Present.
Ms. Haltine.
Present.
Dr. Weaver.
Here.
Mr. Stikes.
Present.
Ms. Dozeman.
Here.
Ms. Nosler Beck.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, all members of the council are present. We have a quorum, and I would like to tell the council, at any time you get dropped off or you, for some reason you can't answer the roll call tonight or at any point, I will make sure that your presence is noted in the minutes, whether or not you're actually here when we do the call of the roll for technical difficulties.
Thank you. Counselors, in your packet, you have the approval of the minutes for our meeting of March 20th, 2020, and our meeting of March 30th for 2020. Without objection, we would let the minutes stand. Are there any objections to the minutes? Seeing none, we'll let the minutes stand as approved. We will now go to the approval of the agenda, and I believe Mr. Urban had one item on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it's Resolution 26. Is that still correct?
That's correct.
So I'd like, I move to add Resolution 26 to the agenda regarding the requirement of wearing face masks within the city of Wheat Ridge.
Thank you. Without objection, we will add that as the first item on our agenda, and with the approval of the council, we will take public comment on that both during the citizen's right to speak and on that item. That's okay with everyone. We we are now going to get to citizens' right to speak. Tonight, we are having a virtual council meeting on a Zoom platform. The city counselors and our staff are visible on the live video feed. Members of the public have been invited to comment on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org in advance of the meeting or to participate live through a web link or by calling in on the telephone. All members of the public who are participating have been mute at this time. We are now at the citizens', at time for the citizens' right to speak. I guess it was on the right page here. We are going to unmute the public at this time. Please keep your background noise to a minimum. You will choose, you may choose to mute yourself through your own device. If you do not plan to speak at all this evening, we recommend that you simply view the meeting live by watching on Channel 8 or on WheatRidgeSpeaks.org. When the time comes to speak, I will invite members of the public to speak based upon the first letter of your last name and about five sections through the alphabet. When I come to be your position in the alphabet, if you would like to speak, please speak up. I will recognize you and, and ask you to give us your first name and your last name. If you would please spell your last name and give us your address for the record. We also are using the raise your hand feature in the Zoom format. If you're familiar with that, you may go ahead and use that, and I will call on you during the time to speak. I'm going to, actually, I'm going to check the raise hand feature and see if I have anybody on there now that has raised their hands. I do have one hand raised. It looks like Zorina Morozovic. If you are there, you may give us your name and address and speak. Maybe it's, maybe it's not her. Maybe it's someone at 303-232-6489.
That was not me at that number. This is Zoriana.
Okay. Zoriana, are you, are you out there and would like to speak at this time?
Yes, thank you. Zoriana Morozovic, 3651 Ward Road, or Sweet Ridge. I, again, am objecting to these virtual meetings and having this done on the computer. I was trying at 10 minutes to 12 to post comments on Wheat Ridge Speaks Now. Could not do it. I kept on getting error messages. This is not a great way to be running a meeting. However, having said that, I am speaking today because I'm opposed to a hospital being built at Clear Creek Crossing site as it's going to negatively impact my quality of life. I'm three blocks away from it. If I wanted to live near a hospital, I would purchase a property near it. Yes?
That's, that's actually, that's actually an item that is on the agenda, but go ahead and continue to speak.
Okay, so now city council is allowed a hospital to be built at Clear Creek, which is right at my back door. And now you're going to be looking to vote, to vote to extend the height restrictions and allow helicopters to be flying over my house. This is not what the NRS study had said. In the NRS study, it said, when it comes to Wheat Ridge neighborhoods, there are many in the city, even if it is not a clear majority, who are at least somewhat uncomfortable with changes that are perceived to be too drastic, out of character with existing conditions or both. Residents also express a desire for positive connection and engagement with their neighbors. None of this has happened with this hospital. We went from this being proposed in May of 2017 with absolutely no mention of any hospital to a medical facilities being added to the plans in January of 2018. In June of 8th of 2018, all the plans show were medical and dental clinics being at this location. And all of a sudden, we're at a hospital with a helipad. I really resent that. If I wanted to live near Lutheran Hospital, I would have been living there. That's where I chose to live. So there's going to be a couple of issues going on here. There's going to be added noise pollution. I'm going to have ambulances going up and down 20, 24/7, up, up and down 38th Avenue, past my house, all hours of the night. There's going to be particulates and EPA hazards, health and safety hazards, increased traffic to an already bad traffic area, an increase in panhandling and the crime rate, and it's going to have an adverse effect on wildlife. And how is a nonprofit hospital going to contribute to our tax dollars? Thank you.
Your time has expired. Thank you very much. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter A through E? If you'd like to speak, please indicate so now, and I will call on you, and you may speak. A through, A through E. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter F through J?
Yes, my last name begins with the letter G.
Please, please speak up and introduce yourself and give us your address, and you may speak. You have three minutes.
Okay, my name is Mary Guest. I live at 8050 Melrose Drive. I live a block from Lutheran Hospital, and I am in favor of the height having height for helicopters. I live a block from Lutheran. I can see SCL Lutheran from my backyard. I have never had a problem with ambulance noise. It becomes light noise after a while. The helicopters coming through, I think the majority of them are going to St. Anthony's. We're kind of in that path. I mean, it's, I have no adverse effects from living a block from Lutheran. I feel like these are, you know, services that need to happen in our community, and I think they're really good neighbors. I cannot complain about them.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter F through J?
Yes.
Yes, yes, please introduce yourself, and you may, you may speak. Give us your name and address, please.
Ihor Figless, 9775 West 36th Avenue. And I left a comment on the, on Wheat Ridge Speaks, but just in case I, I didn't get a chance to call in. And one, one thing I wanted to say is, you know, these comments left on Wheat Ridge Speaks, the people right there, I know they're part of the public record, however, you know, and I have to give credit where credit is due. Mr. Stikes brought this up at the last time the council got together. The, the only way to guarantee, to make sure that all the council people hear it and also to provide the people who might be watching on TV or on YouTube to know what those comments are, is that to actually read them out loud at the beginning of the council meeting or at whenever, whenever they're supposed to be. Because, you know, those are, that, those are comments are as if the person actually appeared before city council. And the only way, like I said, to make sure that they're known to everybody is particularly, like I said, at the, on TV and to, you know, make sure that all the council people have heard it, is that those comments should be read out loud. And, you know, that's really, and the other thing I wanted to say is, in spite, you know, I mean, there's a lot of talk about, oh yeah, you can access the meetings, you know, the problem online. You know, there's, there still isn't, and I've talked about this before, that the city of Wheat Ridge needs to put right on the front page as one of the buttons that you touch, that you hit, is, you know, certain basic things, like the calendar should be right there, right up front, you know, where you can just press the button and you go to straight to the calendar. And the same thing with the city council meetings. There should be a button right on the front page of the city website that says, click here to, to virtually attend, you know, a city council meeting or study session or whatever, planning commission and so on. And I, I've talked about this before. I don't know why the city, you know, they say, oh yeah, you can do it real easily. Well, no, it's not that easy, even for me, even though I've accessed these meetings a number of times. I, I never wrote it down, and I still have to search through the website to find the link to actually attend this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else wishing to speak from the public whose last name begins with the letter F through J? Please speak, and I will recognize you. Anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter K through O? If you would speak up, I will recognize you. And it looks like I have someone on the, on the telephone, last number, or do I have anyone there?
I'm, I'm here on the computer.
Very good. Would you please introduce yourself? Give us your first name and last name, your address, and you will have three minutes to speak.
I will. My name is Melanie Mayner. I live at 2626 Gray Street, and I am a 19-year resident and homeowner. So I just want to thank the city of Wheat Ridge, particularly our, our city manager, Patrick Goff, for issuing the order requiring the face coverings for anyone entering a Wheat Ridge business through the end of May. This not only helps protect the individual wearing the face covering, but it also protects the employees, other customers, and the community overall. Can you tell I wrote this down? Better than winging it. I have a little more to say. Anyway, I have neighbors here in Wheat Ridge who are first responders, and they feel this measure, along with the safer at home recommendation from the governor, will help save lives and curb the spread of COVID-19. I personally have lost people I know to this virus, plus many who have contracted it with varying levels of severity. One of our neighbors just up the street from me got sick on March 15th and was taken to Lutheran Medical Center, where she was on a ventilator for 12 days and, and suffered in a fever of 106 at the worst point of her illness. I can't even believe Judy made it through this. It's just crazy. She's now in physical rehab and hopes to be home in about two weeks. So by the time she gets home, she will have been in the hospital since March 15th, which, you know, I'm so glad she's okay. But anyway, she's in her early 60s. She's in, was in very good health, maintained an active lifestyle and had no symptoms before falling critically ill and almost losing her life. This is just one of thousands of stories on how severe and unexpected this virus can be. Science experts are still discovering new ways in which it appears, and it has spread widely among our younger populations, particularly those in their 30s and 40s. No one is safe from COVID-19. We can take no chances. This pandemic must be curbed. So thank you again, city manager Goff. I really, I can't tell you how much I appreciate your action for showing true leadership in this time of crisis, and also to Mayor Starker and our city council for supporting this lifesaving measure. To date, I've, I've stayed home and worked for the past six weeks. I work actually in Arvada for a very large cultural arts venue and have for many years, and we're all staying safe, so I'm glad that we're doing the same here in Wheat Ridge. You know, I'm going to feel a lot safer venturing out with this order in place, and I really, I appreciate your time and I'm thankful and I, that I can now safely shop at critical business in Wheat Ridge. Janice, I hit the milestone. I did it. You can turn it off. I'm set. Thank you, guys, and, and thanks again for all your leadership on this.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone whose last name begins with the letter K through O would like to speak at citizens' right to speak? Please speak up, and I will recognize you to speak. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter P through T? If you would like to speak, please indicate, and I will call on you, and you may speak. P through T. Is there anyone wishing to speak whose last name begins with the letter U through Z? Please speak up, and I will recognize you. U through Z. Okay, I'm going to go to the Zoom raise hands feature, and I see that Christie has her hand raised. Christie, if you would like to speak, please introduce yourself. Give us your first name and last name and your address, and then you will have three minutes to speak.
Christie, if you can hear me, you're on mute right now. I, I'm trying to unmute you. Can you unmute yourself? There we go.
Okay, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Starker and city council. I, I know that there's an item regarding the variants on
before you get going, can you introduce yourself and give us your address?
Christie Davis, last name spelled D-A-V-I-S, address 7975 West 39th Avenue. I wanted to speak tonight. First of all, thank you guys all for your work on this, and these Zoom meetings are a little bit of something, aren't they? So thank you for the opportunity, and thank you for keep plugging along. What I wanted to speak about tonight is already on the agenda, but I think it may, I'm not sure if it's an item that will be postponed or not, but since we had a couple folks already speak on it, I wanted to speak on the requested variants from Lutheran Medical Center in the Clear Creek Crossing project. And again, if, you know, my address is stated was 7975 West 39th. Lutheran's address is 8300 West 38th. So I do live literally one block away from Lutheran Medical Center. And I will say, born and raised in Wheat Ridge and also born at Lutheran. I really am excited about the opportunity that Lutheran, as one of our largest businesses in the city, has an opportunity to grow and enhance our community with higher services and a higher level for our community, which we all deserve. I do support the variants for the helicopter pad, and as a previous speaker had, had spoke, being, living a block away, the noise of an ambulance or a helicopter is, I would say, no different than what you would hear from a large mufflered car or motorcycle going down the street. Also, especially with Clear Creek Crossing being very close to I-70, I can't imagine that the noise would be any higher than the noise that I-70 itself produces in that area. But, but moreover, what I'd like to say is, although Lutheran is an awesome hospital now, I think that coming from a system that has built a hospital recently in the last five years or so, which would be St. Joe's, we just have an opportunity to increase the benefits to our community. we just have an opportunity to increase the benefits to our community. And that's everywhere from environmentally, cost savings in, in, in those areas, as well as just a higher level of services as, as we build a new hospital. So I do want to voice my thoughts and opinions in supporting that variants change and that move. So thank you very much and I appreciate everything you all do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no one on the Zoom speak feature with their hand raised. Is there anyone out there whose last name begins with the letter A through Z who would like to speak at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to speak.
Yes, if you would please introduce yourself, give us your first name, last name, give us your address, and then you may speak and you'll have three minutes, please.
My name is Odarka Figless, my, O-D-A-R-K-A, last name Ephesian Frank I-G-L-U-S. My address is 10580 West 34th Avenue. And, you know, these are really unusual times and I would really, I think a lot of us would really like to have more information from the city. And I have to say that in the first days of stay-at-home orders when they had to go out of the house, it was really comforting to see our police on patrol, but it really made me wonder, are they safe? Do they have sufficient protective equipment? Is there anything we need, they need? Is there anything we as volunteers can do to help them? And I mean that for all of our first responders. And then, you know, there's, we have to, we have to have a concern for our employees. We don't know how they're doing, how are they weathering all this? You know, what are the plans for coming back to work? How are we going to keep them safe? And if they're already coming into the building, how are we keeping them safe? And then, same thing about our hospital, we just don't have any information. Are we overwhelmed over there? Did they have enough masks? We just don't know. You know, and I think there are a lot of people out here that would volunteer to help with things, but we just don't know. And I think maybe really my biggest concern, as we've talked about people that, you know, we've got a significant senior population in this town and a lot of them don't have internet access. And maybe they live alone or maybe they don't have a really good support system out there. How are we making sure that they're getting the support that they need? You know, I go shopping for three families. I would gladly go out and shopping for somebody else that is more at risk than I am, so that they don't have to go out, but I have no way of connecting with them and even knowing that they need that. And most importantly, I, I mean, it's just horrifying thought and I hope that there's nobody that's suffering alone and not able to get the help that they need. So I'd really ask the city, I mean, this is, I know not a normal thing that the city does, but we can't really do it ourselves because we have no way of knowing who these people might be and having contact with them. We can rally a lot of volunteers, but we need the city to take some leadership on making sure that everybody is taken care of in this community. You know, and, and then we look at numbers and, you know, in the last week, the number of cases in Wheat Ridge jumped from 60 to 90. I mean, that's a huge increase. Is that just statistics? Is there something that we don't understand here or what's going on? I know we have at least one or two outbreaks in the city. I think we would all be just better served if we just had a better flow of communication and have easily found information and so that we could all help each other a little bit better. But, so that's my thought, you know, just, it's, it's nice to try to think about business as usual, but then when you really think about it, it's really not. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Is there anyone else out there whose last name begins with the letter A through Z who would like to speak and under citizens' right to speak? May I do so now?
Mayor, I see a couple hands up.
Okay, we go to the hand up feature. Okay. Vivian, is your hand up?
It is. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, I can. Please introduce yourself and give us your address and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Vivian Voss, 6920 West 47th Place. And I would like to have some discussion when or how does it matter about the city giving citizens some kind of regulation on how in this time of distancing, we could do signatures for petitions? Or we need to continue our zone change until we can be able to gather, to gather to get signatures? We've got clipboards that we must maintain in our hands. We've got pens to think about, six feet distance. We have no large gatherings that we can use for our petition gatherings. Also, I'd like to speak sometime about the posting of signs. We've got some kind of a conflict between the charter and the code of 15 days or 10 days. I think that needs to be addressed. And I would like to see entered into the record, planning commission as well as city council, photos at the time of placing a sign so that we know who placed the sign, what the date was of the posted sign, and some kind of surrounding information that tells us where the sign is actually placed. I'm not sure why signs are not updated as to a new date, whether it's continuous or postponement or whatever. I'd like to see that become part of the grouping. Also, I would second that the Wheat Ridge Speaks comments should be read into the minutes. I would also like to see some attestation from city council members that they have read the Wheat Ridge Speaks comments. I know for a fact that the administrator knows who has and has not read the comments and that emails can be sent as to the fact of that. And then read those minutes, which are public comment into the meeting for future reasons for public comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see, I had another hand raised. Teri Urbanowski, if you are out there, please introduce yourself and give us your address and you'll have three minutes to speak.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Teri Urbanowski, my address is 8015 Melrose Drive. And I was calling to express my viewpoint on the variants for the helipad at the hospital. I was a landscape architect and a planner for 34 years. I'm retired now. But I think a great hospital is a very important key to a great city. I think Lutheran has been a great asset, both to Wheat Ridge and to our neighborhood. I live in the neighborhood. I'm about two blocks away. I have never really noticed noise from ambulances or the helicopters. I can't imagine that we would be interested in building a hospital and not having a helipad. I think as traffic increases, that, that is just part of a new and modern facility and that we should do everything we can as a city to facilitate that.
Thank you very much. I have no one else whose hand is raised on the Zoom platform. One more time, anyone out there whose last name begins with A through Z who would like to speak at this time? You may speak if you will ask to be recognized.
Hi, Mayor Starker, it's Kim Calamino. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am, I can. Please introduce yourself, give us your address and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Sure, I won't take that long. Kim Calamino, 4070 Dover Street here in Wheat Ridge. I did submit a comment through Wheat Ridge Speaks and as others have said, I agree that they, it would be great to have them read into the record and to make sure that everybody on council actually did read them. And also I just want to say hi. It's great to see you. Thank you for your service. And I really, I really support the, the requirement to wear masks. So thank you for instituting that. You all have a great meeting. Thanks.
Thank you very much and thank you for calling. Anyone else out there in the public who would like to speak, you may do so at this time if you would just ask to be recognized. Okay, I don't hear anyone out there. We will now conclude our citizens' right to speak.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I see one man from Caitlin Hutchinson.
Okay. Caitlin Hutchinson, you just made it. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Hutchinson and I'm calling in for citizens' speak. Sorry, I was having issues with my unmute. I'm calling just to further advocate and thank the city for instituting the mask policy. I am in healthcare. I am a researcher in part working on COVID at our VA hospital, trying to take care of our veterans from a distance. I'm a high-risk person with pre-existing health conditions that put me at significant risk of secondary side effects and potential deaths from COVID. And I'm raising two small children. So I feel the burden of both staying home while working and juggling trying to be a remote citizen with the need to try to keep our community safe. And I strongly advocate an urge that we support everyone at the city who's trying to do their best. I know that inconveniences like wearing masks are far less than fun, but the alternative is, to me, unacceptable from a public health stance. I feel that participating in the community with mask-wearing is a way to show Wheat Ridge love and support for everyone who's working really hard. And I appreciate too that people are in a really desperate situation financially across the country and world. But I think there's plenty of community out for our support to provide masks to foes who can't afford. So thank you for your advocacy for our public health. I hope that we continue to make good choices like this.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hutchinson, for calling in and thank you for your work with our veterans. Is there anyone else out there who would like to speak under citizens' right to speak? You may do so now. Okay, I'm going to check the Zoom feature one more time. Just one moment. Yes, Ms. Nosler Beck, we will close the citizens' right to speak and we will recognize Ms. Nosler Beck.
Mayor, I would like to ask for consensus from the council to read in a comment from a constituent that was emailed.
Without objection, please proceed.
All right. I received an email from Sunny Garcia. She's at 4304 Hoyt Street, Wheat Ridge. She said in her email, "We're in an unprecedented time of many unknowns. The COVID-19 virus has caused much upheaval in our lives. Met friends and loved." Mayor, I'm off camera and I'm going to just use my, it, me. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay. I'm going to start here again. "We are in an unprecedented time of many unknowns. The COVID-19 virus has caused much upheaval in our lives. Many have suffered from this virus or lost friends and have loved and loved ones. It is time to put the health and safety of our community above our own needs. I want to thank city leaders and the staff for their hard work and bravery to ensure people living and working within our boundaries are safe and are staying healthy. The temporary order to wear a mask inside critical businesses is a common sense step to ensure our community's health and economic vitality. Life will not get back to normal until this virus is under control and doing our part by wearing a mask will hopefully help speed up that process. Thank you for the opportunity for my voice to be heard, Sunny Garcia."
Thank you, Ms. Nosler Beck. Okay, we will now move on to our agenda. We had one item added by Mr. Urban. I'd like to recognize Mr. Urban at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the agenda item that we added was to provide council an opportunity to pass a resolution as opposed to the previously ordered, order that was issued under the city manager. And I'll, I'll turn it over to Patrick for this.
Mr. Goff, would you like to brief us on this item?
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually turn it over to our city attorney, Mr. Dahl, Mr. Dahl. Is the one that drafted a resolution to repeal the city manager order and replace it with a city council resolution. Essentially doing the same on the mask order, but with some, a few differences. So I will turn it over to Mr. Dahl to explain what those differences are.
Mr. Dahl, please proceed.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as was indicated at the last study session last Monday, council directed the city manager to issue an order for masks to be worn by customers in critical businesses. And as we are all now familiar with the orders of the CDPEG, the state department of health and environment, critical businesses are things like groceries, pharmacies, food stores, various sorts, things that we need on a daily basis to maintain our lives. And as council knows, these, these businesses are, are important. The governor's orders consistently and through to today, including the orders issued today, require employees in these businesses to wear masks, but not customers. Also today, you may have heard that the CDPEG, Department of Health, State Department of Health, issued an order requiring or allowing employees and customers in non, certain non-critical businesses, including a personal care facilities and think hair salons, et cetera, to operate, but requiring both the customers and the employees to wear masks. So we, as we navigate this landscape, what that leaves out in terms of mask-wearing by customers is customers in grocery stores, pharmacies, et cetera, critical businesses, which are not required by the state's order. In any event, the city manager issued that order just about a week ago, April 21st, but it was not to take effect for a week. And this gave the council, I think, the opportunity to receive citizen input. And I know there has been a lot of that on social media and also quite a bit tonight, which is heartwarming. The feedback received in part raised a concern with the enforcement aspect of the city manager's order, which raised the potential for a municipal court ticket. As council might remember, when council first passed the general resolution declaring an emergency and granting certain powers to the city manager and mayor to issue orders, and this was one of those orders, that resolution included an enforcement provision that said, orders of the city manager can be enforced in municipal court if so chosen. And city manager's order of April 21 did say that, but there was opposition to that and concern raised by citizens. That brings me to resolution 26. I think most all of you have that, that draft. And what this resolution does, as mentioned by the city manager, Mr. Urban, is it repeals the city manager's order, replaces it with this resolution of the council. Resolution of the council is similarly an order, ordering customers in critical businesses to wear face masks, or face coverings, but urging their voluntary compliance and eliminating the municipal enforcement aspect that was present in the city manager's prior order. One point I, I think I should make is a connection with this. The city manager's order and this resolution both reference the fact that employees in critical businesses are very brave. And they are really serving all of us and providing things we need on a daily basis and taking enormous risks and doing that, given the number of people that a grocery checkout clerk will see in a day. That is one of the social policy bases for issuing any kind of order regarding customers in those businesses. That's a thumbnail sketch of what city manager's order did and what now the resolution of the council would do in replacing it, but making it voluntary.
Thank you. Before we get to questions, was Chief Murtha going to give us any input on this order, Mr. Goff?
He is. If you, if you have any questions about enforcement, or maybe I'll just let him speak to how our police department manages these types of issues to begin with. So I'll turn it over to Chief Murtha.
Chief Murtha, please take the floor.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I just want to start off by saying, you know, thank you for, for taking this issue head-on. It certainly is a difficult issue, potentially a very difficult issue for the police department to enforce the initial order the way it was written. Generally, our enforcement policy has been through education and voluntary compliance, and we've been very, very successful in Wheat Ridge. We've seen no incidents where we've come in conflict with people who won't listen to our direction when we've been called to incidents where individuals are unclear as to whether or not a person should be wearing face covering or not. So, at this point in time, we've been successful in those incidents where we've, we've had any kind of conflict. We've had, we've other options that we've been able to access that we've been using for, since the beginning of this public health safety issue and going forward, such as trespassing in those businesses. I sort of liken it to the rules of any business. If you can't go into a business and wear a shirt, that's, that's up to the business. We will enforce their trespassing rules if they decide that they would not like to serve you under those conditions. The same exists for masks in this public health emergency. If a business doesn't want you to be in there because they feel it's unsafe for their employees, we'll come and advise you. We will certainly seek voluntary compliance. We will ask you to come back when you have a mask. And we have done that several times with complete compliance to this point. So, voluntary compliance to me is the best way to go. The complicating part of this issue is that not everybody is fully educated on what this order means, and not everybody has the time or takes the time to figure it out. So, we get a fair amount of calls with folks who are confused about what a critical business is or whether somebody should be wearing a mask in the park, and it's taking a lot of resources. So, to the earlier caller, I think it was Ms. Figless who said, you know, they wanted to know how we were doing. We're doing pretty well, but we have to limit our contacts. And this is just another example of police contacts that aren't always necessary. So, because of the confusion that is often created through this type of enforcement, we've, we've, we've gotten a bit of an uptick in our calls for service, and it's taken us away from other business. So, voluntary compliance, we're happy to assist with, and we'll go forward in that route, I think, if the council agrees with that.
Thank you very much, Chief Murtha. And, Mr. Goff, you also had, I saw a memo around today for some public education around this issue. Can you speak a couple of minutes on that, on your efforts to address that?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I might actually turn it over to Ally Scheck. She has put together frequently asked questions that we will be sharing. But also would like to mention too, as Chief Murtha mentions, you know, a lot of people don't understand the orders that are coming out in multiple jurisdictions. And we did get an email from one of our local businesses who understands the order and wants to support it, but he has customers coming from outside of Wheat Ridge and they don't know about the order. So, what we're gonna do to help our businesses is to provide masks if we can get them. We have ordered quite a few masks, non-surgical masks, that we're going to put together a program to distribute those to businesses that are in need, that may need those, and to help them out with that piece of it. So, but I will turn it over to Ally. She can talk about the public outreach on this.
Ms. Scheck?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Patrick. And yeah, as Patrick said, we've put together some, some good FAQs that I think will help. Depending on what you decide to do this evening, we will aggressively push out messaging tomorrow. We'll link to the FAQs. The FAQs talk about, I mean, they're geared towards sort of both businesses and the public in terms of what this is, why it's a requirement, links back to the CDC, you know, these official sources of information and guidelines that we're following. We will make an online request process available as soon as we know when we can expect the masks to be at City Hall. So, once we have a really good delivery date for those, we'll have an online request process that we will ask for everyone's help in getting out into the businesses so they can actually request, request a supply of masks based on their sort of walk-in traffic. We'll do a little formula depending on the amount of requests we have. We have staff lined up to do deliveries of those. And with those, we'll put out messaging that goes with the masks to help the businesses understand best practices around them, how to help educate customers coming in the next time they come, what works for facial covering, hand sanitization, washing their hands, and all of the things. So, I feel like we have, have really good momentum already towards, you know, making, getting the word out there. We also have signage to go to businesses. I'm sure I'm missing something, but I really feel like we have some, we have, we have a lot in the works to make sure that your, your order is faithfully enacted.
Thank you. So, that would, that would be opportunities for businesses to be able to acquire face coverings that they could make available to their customers should they not, should they show up and not have one, that they could go ahead and, and conduct their business safely in that merchant.
Correct.
Thank you. Are, okay, I think that's a good staff report. Are there questions from council on this? Raise your hand and I will call on you. Ms. Hulteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone, for taking action on this. I know it's been a hot topic in our community this week, and I'm glad that we're able to bring the discussion back to council like this. I do have a quite, a couple of questions. I, well, so on Saturday, I went to King Supers at 38th and Sheridan, and I was really impressed. Probably 95% of the people in the store were wearing masks. And I felt like, you know, the need to get closer to 100% is a small margin, but I think it's important. They didn't have one item, so I went over to the Sprouts in Denver because it was closer. And I would say maybe 30% of the people in the store were wearing masks. And I know I, as a consumer, felt a lot safer at the King Supers. So, I think, you know, helping everyone move to a place where we can operate as a city is really valuable. I did see the signs on the door, the doors at King Supers. Are we providing Spanish translation signs as well for people, for the stores? Because I know a lot of burger stores have a lot of non-English speaking customers.
Councilor Hulteen, I think that's an awesome point, and we can do that as part of the mask delivery. Thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. Ms. Beck?
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to thank everybody because I know that we heard from some, some business owners and some folks that were not happy with this. And we also heard from a lot of people who were really pleased with what we did. And I guess what I wanted to just talk to Ally about was, one of the big concerns that I heard from some of the business owners was that because we had a message go out that said that Wheat Ridge was going to be requiring, requiring these masks, that it would limit people from wanting to come to Wheat Ridge to do business because they wouldn't want to have to deal with that extra hurdle. When we get the extra masks and we move forward with all of this, can we make sure that part of the, the PR strategy in explaining that we have masks available for businesses that, that are participating, that that is, I don't want to say advertised, but made a part of our messaging that goes out? Because I think if that, if that flies too far under the radar, we're gonna miss the point of what we're trying to accomplish by doing this.
Absolutely. That's a great point. Yeah, we'll make, we'll make sure that we're talking about it. Thank you. And I've certainly heard from people that have said, "I'm shopping in Wheat Ridge now." So, I think, I think here, I think there's something to be said about really just talking about, you know, that you can count on folks in Wheat Ridge doing their part to keep you safe.
Yeah. And, and so, and I've heard from a lot of people with that. Ally, the, the few business owners that I did talk to that were upset about it, one example that was given to me was that they're down from, you know, normally up to 300 customers a day. Now they maybe have three customers, and this mask order may, may make it so that they only have two customers that are walking through the door. And so, when you're, when you're dealing with those kind of numbers, three, two, or one, every customer counts. And so, whatever we can do to help.
Every customer and every business. Thank you very much, Ms. Nosler Beck. Additional comments from, from council? Ms. Dozeman, Mr. Urban, and Ms. Hoppy?
So, I just kind of wanted to know about the messaging from here on out because I think that there was a lot of confusion and mixed messaging, which is why we're having to have this discussion again. Like, we just got, we discussed enforcement and having it be at the business's discretion, and yet we implemented it being a misdemeanor offense, which I think is drawing on the police department resources. So, I'm confused as to how this message will come out as far as, like, are we gonna say that the city manager's order is rescinded, and yet we're putting in a resolution and then, like, highlighting the changes? Because I think that this is just maybe going to confuse the issue even further.
Let me speak to that for just a moment because the resolution does say that the, the city manager's order is repealed, and the, the mask order is reaffirmed and modified. So, it's modified to be a voluntary order, but the previous order that was a misdemeanor offense would be repealed.
So, then we are going to be sending out, like, a press release and another message?
Yes, yes. This will be, this will be part of the messaging that a, you know, a new resolution, and this is, this, you know, there's a subtle difference, or not really a subtle difference, that this formally was a consensus order on the basis of the council. Now, we're in an official council meeting and we're taking a resolution on that. So, it's a significantly different order.
Yeah, Sarah Spalding, our PIO, is probably on the call and has a draft press release ready to go based on what council decides this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of double up on what Ms. Dozeman said is that I think a lot of the issues that came out of this was the use of the word misdemeanor, and that was not discussed in the prior council meeting, and so I'm glad to see that the new order doesn't call this a misdemeanor because at the end of the day, we're all adults here, and what we're asking for is not outrageous. I think it's a rather small ask of people to be wearing a mask out in public, especially right now. And I understand the burdens that this places on our local business community in a time when they're being asked to shoulder a lot in our, in our response to this. So, I appreciate their willingness to work with us on this and realize that, at the end of the day, the measures that we're taking are the ones that we as council feel like is the best for our community. And at the present time, wearing a mask in public is, is the norm, not the abnormal. So, as it relates to this order, I think that it's a smart move for us to make. It says that if you don't comply, that's really on you. The punishment in this isn't really a misdemeanor. It's, you know, life and death for some folks. And so, we need to just keep that in mind as we go forward, that businesses can choose to enforce this or not, but I would encourage those businesses out there to enforce this and thank all the frontline workers who are showing up to work every day and making sure that our economy keeps moving. And that's, again, part of the reason we're doing this, is to protect those frontline workers. So, thank the staff for dealing with this over the past few days. And setting aside, you know, where people stand on this issue, the fact is, is that everybody's talking about face masks in Wheat Ridge, and that's a good thing. So, it's, you know, it's an important thing to do, and I'm glad that we're taking this step.
If you'll permit me, I'd like to read the last, the last paragraph in the order. And it says, "The council strongly urges all citizens for your own health and safety and for that of brave citizens who are staffing the grocery stores, pharmacies, and other businesses that are so critical to our daily needs to comply with this order. It is only through our collective efforts that we can protect those persons, ourselves and our families. The council generally appreciates your voluntary cooperation." We'll put down Ms. Hoppy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I feel like there is some contrast happening here because under Section 2A, so Mr. Mayor just read Section 2D, but under Section 2A, it says, "All persons entering a critical business as defined by the fourth updated health order 2024, the Colorado Department of Health and Environment are hereby ordered to wear a medical or non-medical face coverings such as to cover their nose and mouth when entering any such business and in conducting any interaction with such business." So, ordered is not voluntary, but then in paragraph D, it says, "Thank you for your voluntary cooperation." So, just want to make sure it's clear, like, this is mandatory. We are asking for your volunteer cooperation. There are other ways we can address other than misdemeanor. If you're not cooperating and wearing a face covering that is mandatory at a critical business, it's not necessarily a misdemeanor, but you could potentially get in trouble for trespassing if you don't leave when they ask you to leave. So, so there's a lot of kind of conflict in this language, and so I was just hoping that there could be some clarification there.
Thank you. And you cut out a little bit, but I think we got the gist of it, and I'd like to ask Mr. Dahl if you could respond to that, please.
Well, I appreciate the question. As council's aware, this section of the resolution, Section 2, is basically the city manager's April 21 order replicated and then replacing the misdemeanor enforcement language at the end of that order with the paragraph that the mayor just read. So, I, I think Councilmember Hoppy is right in saying that there is a contrast there. You could, in my opinion, I think Councilmember Hoppy's explanation is about right, that this is an order because you're using that word. It's an order, and we're asking for voluntary operation with that order. And while the two terms seem a little inconsistent, it's, it's not uncommon to have orders be voluntary, voluntarily enforced. So, having said that, it does mean you have to explain that, though. You have to explain the issue that Councilmember Hoppy raises. I think it's explainable, and you could do that, and just leave it this way. Door number two, if you wanted to do less explaining about that, comes at a price, though. And door number two would be you change letter A a little bit instead of saying, "All persons entering these businesses are hereby ordered to wear medical and non-medical." You could say, "are hereby strongly urged to wear." But that's the price you pay for that kind of consistency. You take some of the importance out of it and some of the stress out of it. So, that's a balancing task that is clearly the council's to make, but I wanted to tell you how to do it if you wish.
Thank you. Mr. Stites and then Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we had a pretty good discussion about this last week, and I think maybe there were a couple of different, we all kind of wanted the same thing, but maybe for different reasons. And so, that might be why we were all a little bit unhappy with how the, or maybe not everybody was, but how the, the order came out. I, I do appreciate the work that you guys have done, and I do like this. And I do hope that we can actually keep the word, the words as they are, because I do think that this shouldn't be a request. I think this should still stay in order. But I agree, misdemeanor was a little far for, for our purpose, I think. But to keep it the, the way it is now, I think we should keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. My concern about this, this is a public health and safety issue, and what we're doing is to try to protect others from ourselves when we wear masks. This has been going on since March. For people to not be educated with every kind of information that is out there available now is a lame excuse. They know what's going on. When I look out by my roads, by my neighborhood, 90% of the people are not wearing masks. So, they are pushing strollers, they're riding bikes, they're doing skateboards, they're jogging. They aren't wearing masks, okay? Those aren't old people. So, the whole thing also about the city paying for masks for businesses, that doesn't happen at King Supers. People know they need to go to King Supers, get groceries, so they wear masks. It's personal responsibility. And I don't think the city should be paying for masks for people to go into businesses and things. It's their own responsibility to keep themselves healthy and others healthy. So, you know, it needs to be mandated. If we're gonna do voluntary... So, you know, it needs to be mandated. If we're gonna do voluntary, it's not gonna happen. It is not gonna happen. So it needs to be mandated. And you know, then if you see somebody that doesn't have a mask, go, hey, you need to wear a mask. That's not, that's all you're saying. You're not shaming somebody, snitching on them or whatever like that. They know it. They know it and they're just doing whatever they want to do. So that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you. Must be eight o'clock. I hear the howls. Additional comments from council, Ms. Hoppy and then Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree. I would like to keep the word order in there. Um, I was hoping that there would be something in between involuntary compliance and misdemeanor that we could find ground on, but if this is truly how the department feels that this is the best way to pursue this, and of course I'll support our police department in that. But I, I just want to make sure that when the message goes out there, the message is not voluntarily wear your mask. The message is you are ordered to wear your mask. And so when you're entering critical businesses. So I just want to make sure that the message, it's hard because it has such a conflict in it, in it. But I want to make sure that the message gets out there that yes, mandatory to wear your mask. No, we're not sending you to jail or getting you a rap sheet for not wearing your mask. So I, you know, I just want to make sure that that message is clear.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy. Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess where a lot of people get kind of hung up on this is that we're used to being told what will happen if we don't do something. And in this regard, what we're doing is we're ordering people to wear a face mask. We don't need to tell you what's gonna happen if you choose not to wear a face mask. Everybody already knows what will happen and that's you could be infecting other people or other people could be infecting you. And this is, we are currently in a state of emergency and uh, I think it's okay for us to put out an order and says, "This is what we as a city are ordering you to do." And we don't need to attach a punishment to that. We don't need to tell you what will happen if you don't do it. You already know. And that's something that we just need to be clear on the messaging here is that this is a, this is an order from the city. We were just to what to do. Uh, if you've got time or inclination to worry about, you know, what would happen if I don't do it? That's, that's sort of the people that want to sort of speculate or, or try to, you know, you know, rile us up as far as different political entities that are trying to use this as some kind of uh, rallying, rallying point. And so I, I would ask us just to continue with the concept of it being an order. It is uh, we're asking for voluntary compliance. We're not looking to have many, you know, string anybody up for this. And so we just want to make sure that people understand that this is not something that we're messing around with. We want to protect our citizens and this is the best way forward. And so as far as the messaging is concerned, I think at FAQ or some sort of list of questions informing the businesses that we're not asking our business owners to snitch on their customers. We're not asking fellow customers to snitch on each other. We're asking people for their voluntary compliance with what is in order.
Thank you, Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So along that same line, I just wanted a clarification as far as like I, and I don't know if you can maybe speak to this, Patrick, but I haven't seen any orders requiring masks outdoors. So that's, it's just in critical businesses where you would be coming to closer contact with people. So if you're outdoors on a trail or something, you need to be respectful of social distancing, but masks aren't required, right?
Yeah, that's correct. According to the, both the statewide order and the Jefferson County Public Health Order, you don't have to have a mask as long as you can practice social distancing. Except in these businesses, yeah.
Ms. Hutchinson?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. I believe masks are recommended.
Yes.
Okay, so it's not like you don't have to wear them out there or anything, especially people who are riding bicycles that are going pretty fast. There's a lot of, you know, air coming from them and stuff and the people who are jogging and things that carries. So that's just why, you know, recommended means maybe you should be doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Urban, may I have a, may I have a motion on this item?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Holtein. I didn't mean to skip you.
I think my hand blends in with the door. Thank you. Uh, I, I need a point of clarification and I apologize. I feel like there's so many orders coming at the state, county, local level. Um, but over the course of the tenure of this particular order, the state's gonna be shifting or is shifting currently from stay at home to safer at home. And I just want to clarify the definition of essential businesses because isn't that a little bit fluid over the next month in terms of some of the activation of like personal services? Do we want to stick with essential businesses or is it businesses open to the public? I feel like that distinction might become important over the next couple of weeks.
Mr. Goff or Mr. Dahl would either be one?
Tag team it maybe a little bit, but yeah, critical, critical businesses are specifically defined in, in the governor's order and the state health department's order. Um, personal service businesses are defined separately. Um, and then non-critical businesses are also defined. So that is a question that you could discuss or a topic. Um, Ms. Holtein, right now the resolution is drafted as just for critical businesses. Um, in, in Jefferson County, um, only critical businesses are allowed to be opened through May eighth at this point. Um, because the Jefferson County Public Health Department extended the stay at home order, the statewide stay at home order through uh, May eighth. So only critical businesses are allowed. They, one exception they, they included, one new exception is curbside pickup for non-critical businesses is allowed now in Jefferson County. But, but you are right. This does not, this resolution would not cover uh, non-essential, non-critical, non-essential businesses. Mr. Dahl?
I agree with what Patrick has said. I, I agree with council member Holtein that it continues to be sort of an evolving regulatory landscape. But so far, the definition of critical businesses has remained consistent through all the governor's various requirement or, you know, orders. Expect that'll still be true. So the, the hole, if you will, there's a gap that you're filling with this resolution. The hole saying customers in critical businesses should have masks likely will persist while other businesses are slowly allowed to open. I think that the reason personal care businesses uh, that the CDPH took the more extraordinary step of requiring both employees and customers in those businesses is because those businesses by their nature require actual contact between the employee and the customer. Not quite the same thing is true in, in let's say a grocery store. Having said all that, I, I think that the best council could probably do now, rather than saying, okay, we're gonna require masks in any business which is permitted to be open and where the state doesn't require masks, I mean, you can do that. I'd be inclined to just plug the critical business customer mask gap, which you're doing with this now. Uh, other businesses will be allowed to open slowly over the next couple of weeks. Council will meet again on May the eleventh. And I think that's probably when, if you wanted to do an adjustment, you should, rather than trying to fashion the resolution now in a way that would anticipate changes. Um, I think this will be pretty solid for two weeks and you can look at it again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions of staff before we go to a motion? Okay, seeing no questions, Mr. Urban, would you please provide us a motion on resolution twenty six?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve City Wheat Ridge Resolution Twenty Six Series of twenty twenty. A resolution of the city, uh, resolution of the Wheat Ridge City Council repealing, repealing the order of the city manager requiring the wearing of face coverings and amending and reissuing the same as this resolution of the city council.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand so the clerk can see it and the clerk will count the votes. Your microphone is mute.
All right. Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. Thank you, council members. You may lower your hands and let the blood run back.
Thank you very much, council, for a good discussion. I appreciate you, uh, taking up this issue. Okay, we will now go to agenda item number one and I would like to, uh, ask Mr. Stites to introduce agenda item number one.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, item number one, uh, council bill number zero five dash twenty twenty, an ordinance approving an amendment to the existing plan mixed use development, PMUD, zoning to increase the allowable height for hospital uses at Clear Creek Crossing, case number WZ dash nineteen dash ten. At issue, the applicant is requesting to modify the underlying zoning to increase the allowable height for hospital uses. A hospital is already a permitted use in the existing zoning and the existing zoning also contemplated in six years or six-story employment uses. However, a hospital built in six stories requires an additional twelve feet of height to meet design requirements and current building codes. The applicant is also seeking a limited additional height allowance for, to accommodate a rooftop elevator associated with the helipad.
Thank you. This is a, an ordinance on second reading. Uh, Mr. Goff, do you have a report or a direction on this item?
Actually, yes, we'd like to, uh, turn it back over to the city attorney, Mr. Dahl. And he would like to, uh, discuss some unique challenges and issues with, with this, with this case that um, we're asking for a different direction from city council tonight.
Mr. Goff, please proceed.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Uh, what I'm going to do is to ask council to take a motion to uh, indefinitely postpone this ordinance, uh, tonight so that the substantially the same ordinance doing the same thing, a new one can be introduced and set for a public hearing, uh, July eighth, excuse me, June eighth, uh, in order to create a, a very clear noticing and procedural background for whatever council chooses to do on this land use case. That's what I'm gonna ask for in a minute, but what I'd like to do is give you sort of the context for that and the background for that because I think you you would want to have that and it will, the same background, the same approach, I'm gonna be recommending be taken with the Hardy rezoning, which is not on tonight's agenda and you won't need to take an action on it, but I want to kind of tee that up because it's a similar issue. Uh, that's the rezoning at ninety eight hundred West Thirty Eighth Avenue. So if you'll indulge me, I'll, I'll give you the background and my reasoning for making uh, this request. The, um, both the SCL and then ninety eight hundred West Thirty Eighth cases are rezoning cases. And those require ordinances, as council well knows. Both of those cases have had first reading of an ordinance. Uh, the, both of those cases previously had planning commission action and that's over with. And they don't need to go back to do that because they've checked that box. These are land use applications the city has required to process. And can't not process because every property owner has the right to bring an application and have it viewed by planning commission and finally acted on by council. So what we're talking about here is what is the right procedure to make sure that the rights of citizens and the applicants are appropriately respected, their due process rights in the council's review of those two rezonings. Uh, so first reading happened on both of them, as you know, but in both cases, the first reading ordinances require that the matter be set for public hearing, date, time and place, and importantly, place. And, uh, that place was the city hall. It was the standard first reading language that we've all seen. That was fine when those motions were passed, but of course then life changed in the middle of March. And council, in responding to the COVID pandemic, moved its meetings, virtual meetings, which had the meeting location place different in real life or was gonna be different in real life than what had been articulated in the first reading motion on both of those rezonings. Now, we were able to adjust the posted and letter notices. You'll recall the rezoning ordinances require a posted notice, a letter notice um, and a published notice in the newspaper. We were able to adjust the posted letter notices to indicate they would be virtual for the dates the hearings were set. Presently, the hearings are set for tonight on the SCL height matter and, uh, June the eighth on the ninety eight hundred West Thirty Eighth. But we're not able to adjust in time to satisfy the fifteen day charter requirement, the publication, uh, date. There's a publication out there in the transcript and it's got the right virtual place, but it only had twelve days. And so there's a, there's a defect there. So in order to, um, solve this problem, uh, what do you do? Here's, uh, the recommendation I'm making and I've networked this, of course, with the uh, with the community development staff, the city manager. We spent some time today working through this and, and putting together what we think is the, the right approach and, and that is to simply postpone indefinitely these two ordinances. Uh, so they go away. Introduce new ordinances on May the eleventh, which is your next meeting, at first reading. The first reading motion on those two ordinances can say date, time and place. Now, we're not sure about the place. It likely will be, it may well be still virtual, might be in person. You don't have to decide that tonight. You decide that tonight, you do first reading on these new ordinances. And we'll have more information in two weeks and we'll make the best determination and then you'll need to stick with the place that you said on first reading and we'll notice it out that way. Plenty of time then between May eleventh and June the eighth, which would be the date for both of these hearings. So no hearing tonight. There's a hearing already set, June eighth for the, for the Hardy ninety eight hundred uh, West Thirty Eighth and that date will stay the same. It'll just have a new first reading ordinance that will get teed up. We can tee that up uh, on the, on the eleventh. Uh, that will allow the full kind of transparent noticing process to fully satisfy, be fully satisfied under the charter and the code, be able to articulate the place if it's gonna be virtual or if it's gonna be in a person. You might ask, well, what about the ninety eight hundred West Thirty Ninth, uh, West Thirty Eighth, sorry? Rezoning, what about that ordinance? It's not on your agenda tonight. I'm not asking you to put it on so that you can postpone that ordinance. You can get that done June the eighth. By June the eighth, there will be a new ordinance for West Thirty Eighth Avenue, having passed on first reading on May the eleventh. So when you get to the Thirty Eighth Avenue issues on June eighth, first I'll ask that you postpone indefinitely the one that's been hanging around, but I'll call the defective one, the one that's presently out here. And then you'll be able to act on and have a public hearing on the new one for this very same kind of rezoning, uh, that gets introduced on first reading on May the eleventh. Uh, the net of this is that, uh, May the eleventh, you introduce two new matters. Basically, you re, re-up these matters. You re, uh, you restart them. And you restart the, all the noticing clocks for them. And then on June the eighth, you have the hearings on them. At the time, place and location, et cetera, that you indicated in the first reading, you will, you know, give us time in between May eleventh and June eighth. Along with the noticing with plenty of time and put these proper, proper hopperly back on, back on track. I'm sure there may well be questions about the, the timing and the sort of messaging of this as well. And I'm happy to uh, answer those and possibly call them on, on Ken Johnstone for some help if there's a question.
Thank you. And we have a question, our first question from Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I just was wondering if we would be able to, um, like name two potential places or if it just has to be one specific?
Yeah, we, we've given thought to that and frankly, I've been giving thought to that as a general matter. And I don't want to get too far off the topic, but I, I think it's probably likely that when we're all allowed to meet in person again, there may well be a real demand for people to continue to be able to participate virtually. And we'll have to see how that evolves. But, uh, my recommendation would be that come May eleventh, we will have a staff recommendation for where it's gonna happen. And, uh, I believe that it probably will still be too soon to do some kind of hybrid and that we'll have to make a choice and just live with that choice. Uh, because otherwise you, you're never done kind of hopscotching these things out into the, into the future. But, uh, I'd like to take the next two weeks. I think a lot is gonna happen in terms of what's allowed and isn't last couple, in the next two weeks to make that decision and we'll have a recommendation for you and it will be built into first reading ordinance.
Thank you. I'll go to Mr. Stites and then Mr. Urban.
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna, I guess somewhat ask the same question as Ms. Dozeman did. Would there be an option to, even if we go back to in-person meetings, still zooming them and, and keeping them going virtually so that we could still, um, do that? And I guess you kind of just answered that. Can I ask, where are the signs posted for this development?
Uh, Ken Johnstone is going to answer that in a minute, but I'll say that the the code requirements merely say they need to be on the property. They can't be off the property. They have to be on the property. And sometimes that's an issue, honestly, because it's hard for people to see, but presently we follow the code. Can't follow something else other than the code. And right now we follow the code and it says on the property. Uh, Ken, do you want to add to that?
Sure. Thank you, Jerry. Um, I I will tell you my understanding of where they're uh, posted. Uh, it is the planning area specific to the hospital. So along fortieth uh, in proximity to the trail that takes you down to the gold painting area. So it's challenging, right? Because it's it's a site that's not really very open to the public right now. Uh, but it has to be located in the in the specific planning area where the the change is requested because uh, the applicant has very much limited the scope of the application in terms of requesting this increase in height in in only a very targeted area uh, specific to the hospital. So that's where the property is posted.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Urban.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. I guess along those lines, when we, so they had two questions. One of them was this issue of the posting of the signs and I think it, you know, in the light of the law, it says it has to be posted on the property, but that doesn't limit us from posting elsewhere adjacent to the property to make it more visible. And I think that was an issue that some of the constituents brought up regarding this particular hearing was the location of that posting and we can post the property, but I think having it posted somewhere adjacent to there, that's a little bit more accessible to the public would assume some of those concerns that they have. So like us to at least look at how we can better post that property. Um, setting that aside, on the issue of that was brought up under public comment tonight regarding the uh, signature process for petitions, is there any ability to get sort of a game plan together or standard operating procedure for citizens prior to the May eleventh meeting or at least prior to the June eighth meeting so that we have a clear path for how citizens are to obtain signatures on a petition if they chose to elect that route? Uh, if we're going to be passing ordinances, they should have the same ability to uh, pass a petition.
Uh, fair question. What I would uh, continue to want to do, and I reported to you already and I think a a memo saying what what uh, I was able to learn, not a lot, but I believe the governor's office, secretary of state continue to look at uh, what kind of changes can be made from on the the executive department level to the petitioning process. And I haven't heard anything more since then, but I'm happy to take that assignment on and continue to to try to learn what we can do there. That's a process that the city doesn't directly uh, control. Um, we can certainly think about an ordinance to implement initiative referendum locally. You don't have an ordinance now. Very kind of short form charter provision. You do have the right to implement initiative referendum process by ordinance and what that would be in terms of carrying petitions. I I'm happy to to look at. One of the the ideas that I shared with the council, I believe you received a memo from me, was the forty-five day period to um, within which you must circulate a referendum petition. We're talking about referendum here, not so much initiative referendum on a rezoning anyhow. Is starts from the day past the ordinance. That's the day you vote on it on second reading. But as I mentioned to all of you, one option you do have is on second reading and that would be June the eighth. Making a decision, I'd wait till then, of course, just halfway till then. Of making a decision to to have your your hearing, take all your testimony, close the hearing and continue the matter for action only to a later date. That sets out into the future, the magical date of final passage, which is the trigger date for referendum. And it may be that come June eighth, you'll have a sense of how much longer it will be before that just the normal petition circulating process is able to be conducted. In between now and then, I'm happy to look at two things. Uh, the degree to which the city council could enact an ordinance implementing petition uh, circulation procedures in the time of COVID. I think that'll be really unique, I'll tell you, because I'm sure it hasn't been done before. I'm happy to look at it and do a little networking on the attorney's list here. And also re- uh, engage with the governor's office to find out what they're doing around that because at one point they did say that they were concerned about that. I realize that's not a a solution and instead it's a process to lead me to op- some options for council, but I'll certainly take that on as a task. I I I agree with you. It's serious. Our citizen might be concerned about that. Um, you've got some immediate tools, which is just delay the date of a passage if you have to. And uh, by June eighth, uh, I'll try and bring as much more to the table for you to think about as.
Good. Thank you. And then my last question is, we we did have several speakers under public comment that were speaking directly to this hearing item. And if we're going to be postponing this issue, I I feel like we need to reach out to them specifically to ask them to come back under public comment uh, to speak uh, because it will be a brand new item and um, I just want to make sure that they're clear that their comments weren't necessarily corralled under this public hearing. And so it that there's they're not ex parte because we've all heard them now, but I just want to make sure that um, they are reached out to and asked to represent those comments in a proper public hearing. Does that sound, does that ring true, Jerry?
Yes, yes, it does. And I appreciate your mentioning that, that I was observing that too. I observed that that's not something you cut off, even though it wasn't the the hearing. It was perfectly fine with statements being made. It wasn't ex parte because you're all hearing it. Uh, and the public's able to hear it. And so, yes, I think that they do need to be told the formal record on this case hasn't started yet. This is going to be a new ordinance, a new hearing. And we'll make sure that there there's an outreach to people who are identified to to say the hearing is now going to be uh, June the eighth. And and we will do that at least by the time you set a new first reading on May the eleventh, because that's that's when you'll actually set the hearing. Tonight, the only action, even though there's been a lot of discussion here, the only formal action I'm going to ask you to take and the only action I think you can take is simply to postpone indefinitely a council bill zero five twenty twenty. But clearly you needed the background for why I'm asking you to do that and why these cases don't go away. But they basically get restarted with with a new set of of clean procedures.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Any further discussion, Ms. Dozeman?
I just had a question in regards to um, the other uh, s- second public hearing that we would have to be postponing indefinitely. When would we take that action if it's not on the agenda right now?
Uh, I've given a lot of thought to that. We're a little in sort of unusual territory because it's not usually when something's postponed indefinitely, you're done with it. Never going to see it again. Here, we fully intend to bring it back because we must. The applicant's got the right to to that. Um, I want to give this a little thought. To make it a little more clear for the citizens, I I think I kind of prepared further to get added to the agenda on May the eleventh. And we get that one postponed indefinitely then. So both of the old ones are gone. Both of the new ones come in on first reading on May the eleventh. And we don't have sort of an odd postpone the ninety eight hundred West thirty eighth on June eighth and then turn right around and have a hearing on it. Uh, if there's no objection from council, I think what I'm going to do is ask uh, the mayor pro tem if we could add postponing the ninety, postponing indefinitely the pending ninety eight hundred West thirty eighth to the May eleventh meeting because that's the meeting I'm going to be sitting here again explaining to you and hopefully a lot of public. Here's what we're doing. This, the old cases are going away and tonight we're starting two new ones. And both of them, get ready because both of them are going to go to hearing on June the eighth. If uh, I think that's maybe the, you talked about earlier about waiting, but uh, but I would like to be able to advance that and get it out of the way.
Tonight? Was that, was that in this meeting?
Uh, no, no, on May the eleventh.
On May the eleventh, okay. Thank you. Is there, are additional uh, questions from council? Mr. Urban?
Hey, Mr. Mayor. Um, my question is regarding the council rules and I'm looking at page eleven under initiating and adding agenda items. Um, under part three of part D on page eleven of the council rules, it says, other than by reconsideration pursuant to rule six, one's an item that's been decided by a formal city council vote at any regular, special or adjourned meeting or by binding consensus vote at any study session under rule four dot B dot one, it is not eligible to be added to future agenda for six months. So is our postponing indefinitely these items, a formal vote of council? And does that preclude us from adding it to agenda within the next six months?
No, because it will be a new ordinance. Uh, it, even though the topic is the same, it'll be a, it'll be a new ordinance. Uh, and uh, from a due process standpoint, just getting away from the council rules from there, although I'm glad you mentioned it. From a due process standpoint, on land, on rezoning cases, the applicant is entitled to a hearing and a decision. Uh, so you, um, and that, that, that would trump any procedural rule. And I'm comfortable saying that it's a new council bill. It's the topic is the same. It's that same rezoning, but it's a new council bill, which makes it a new item. That that rule was written and I've seen it uh, implemented a number of times over the years. Uh, somebody loses a vote on something and um, wants it back right away. And uh, here the vote isn't getting, postponing indefinitely is not losing the vote. It's a procedural um, step that you will take that allows you to then actually consider the item on its merits.
Got it.
Thanks for asking.
Yep.
Thank you. Is there a further discussion on this item? Uh, Ms. Hoppy, may I have a motion to postpone indefinitely council bill zero five twenty twenty?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to postpone indefinitely council bill number zero five dash twenty twenty in ordinance approving an amendment to the existing planned mixed use development PMID zoning increase uh, zoning to increase the allowable heights for the hospital uses at Clear Creek Crossing for the following reason, to allow staff to reschedule and restart the public hearing notification process under a new ordinance.
Second. We have a motion by Ms. Hoppy, a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand and the clerk will record the vote.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously. The item is indefinitely postponed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, council. I appreciate your help.
Uh, Mr. Dahl, oh, it's item number two. Ms. Nosler Beck, would you please introduce this item?
Thanks, Mayor. Council bill number zero seven dash twenty twenty in ordinance vacating any interest held by the city in a portion of, sorry, my screen just went away for me. Um, vacating any interest, am I on this, am I on the right one? Let me start over. Council bill number zero seven dash twenty twenty in ordinance vacating any interest held by the city in a portion of Youngfield Service Road, a public roadway. At issue, the city of Wheat Ridge holds rights of way and trust for the public portion of roadway at the north end of the Youngfield Service Road located on the west side of the interstate seventy has been deemed to be unnecessary by the engineering division and is proposed to be vacated.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. It is an ordinance on second reading. It is not quasi judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And um, do we have a staff report on this, Mr. Goff?
We do. Uh, Mr. Johnstone, our community development director.
Mr. Johnstone, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I apologize, Ms. Nosler Beck. I was the one interrupting your uh, screen. I was trying to share the screen, which doesn't seem to be, oh, there you are. Do you see something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. You see the the colored graphic with the aerial?
Yes.
Okay.
And your talking points.
Oh, okay. Well, then we're done. Um, I thought just looking at the graphic would be uh, would be sufficient to kind of walk through this one. Um, the right away that we're talking about vacating was vacated on the first Clear Creek Crossing plat. It was actually this cul-de-sac or this portion of the cul-de-sac uh, outlined in blue. Uh, the rest of that cul-de-sac is actually located in in C dot right away. Um, so it has evolved since the first filing of Clear Creek Crossing back in uh, two thousand and eleven.
And could you point out a little bit where you're at too?
Did you see my cursor?
Yeah, but La Quinta, point out.
Okay, yeah, fair enough. So uh, this is the Clear Creek Crossing development uh, kind of generally in this location. Uh, C dot going north, south in this vicinity. This is I seventy of the existing La Quinta. Uh, Clear Creek Drive, which has recently been built uh, and goes in this direction. And then the new uh, recently opened or at least partially opened uh, hook ramps off of I seventy. So this is the kind of the lot in question that's being currently proposed for a come and go gas station uh, and convenience store. That actually occupies the this southern portion of this of this block and then the northern portion will be developed for some other use. So this cul-de-sac initially provided access to this lot as well as a turnaround uh, so for notably for uh, snow trucks that might be clearing this cul-de-sac. Uh, the circulation pattern has evolved uh, as we've evaluated subsequent, subsequent plats uh, in Clear Creek Crossing. And as it turns out now, the way circulation will work uh, again, notably in part at least for C dot seat, uh, snow, snow, snow plows, but also for general vehicle uh, use will be simply to come out through this, what is now going to be a thirty-six foot wide uh, public access easement. So it no longer necessitates the build out of this turnaround cul-de-sac. And that's really the portion of the street that's being uh, proposed to be vacated uh, by this uh, by this ordinance. Uh, I can certainly answer more questions if that's not clear, but one thing I did want to to touch on um, is the notice for this uh, required for this ordinance. Uh, as was noted, this is not a quasi judicial land use case. This is just a standard ordinance. Uh, the notification for this for such an ordinance uh, requires simply publication in uh, the transcript or any uh, paper of general circulation. That's been accomplished on April sixteenth uh, and only needed to be seven days in advance of this public hearing. So uh, it was accomplished uh, twelve days prior to the public hearing. Uh, there's no physical posting of the property required for a right of vacation and there's no mailing to adjacent property owners. So the notice for this type of an ordinance is somewhat simpler uh, but has been accomplished and I just wanted to make that clear for the record. And with that, I'd be glad to answer questions.
Thank you very much. Before I go to questions from council, I would like to open it up for any questions from the public. Uh, if you are a member of the public who would like to speak on this issue, if you would uh, please speak now, I will recognize you and uh, and you may have an opportunity to speak if you would give us your name and address. Is there anyone now from the public who would like to speak on this issue? I will also be looking at the um, uh, the raise hand function in the Zoom uh, platform. I don't see any hands raised. Is there anyone uh, out there who would like to speak on this issue? Okay, I'm going to close public comment and um, open it up for uh, questions of council uh, to staff.
Ken, you may want to stop sharing your screen. There we go.
Okay, if you'll just raise your hand, I will take your questions. Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So does the public hearing, the first reading, um, does that not apply here where like we set the time and place? And therefore need to create another uh, postponement and first reading?
I think that's for Ken. Ken, the first reading was appropriately noted, right?
Yes, I'm just trying to uh,
But probably for uh, in-person meeting.
It was for the April thirteenth. Roger, did you say you're pulling it up?
Trying to, yeah.
I have the April thirteenth was the original date for the second reading that um, that was on, it was on second reading. So I think it was just before that was the first reading.
April thirteen.
It was item number four on April thirteenth.
And I know uh, Lori Higle is on the call as well. And I know, uh, Lauren Higle is on the call as well. Allison, do you want to let her in?
But the original first reading was, was March ninth.
Yeah.
Can you hear me? This is Lauren. So we, the original first reading was March ninth. We published right after first reading, similar to the other cases, it published in the newspaper to be an in-person meeting. And then after the April thirteenth meeting, when this item was continued, we updated the newspaper publication on the morning on the fourteenth to be published that Thursday to indicate that this specific item would be heard in a virtual meeting format, and that met the seven day, I believe, seven day notice requirement required for an ordinance that's not a quasi judicial item.
So we have, uh, Ms. Dozeman.
Yeah, so I guess my follow-up would be for Mr. Doll. Like, we, we had to postpone indefinitely due to the first reading noting the date, time, and place, the place being City Hall. Would that be applicable to this as well or not because it's not quasi judicial?
Um, two reasons. Number one, it's not quasi judicial, so you don't have legislative act that you're taking in. You know, the state legislature will at the very last minute decide that they're going to pass something, postpone it, do stuff with it, it's legislative. And, and in that arena, you don't have the same kind of due process rights of, of people that you otherwise have. Clearly, there's a hearing requirement, but that hearing requirement has been noticed out and put in the paper. In contrast to the ones we just dealt with, the notice in the paper was short, uh, and that needed to be fixed. You're, you're left with sort of a, um, uh, real inside baseball kind of debate about, well, if the first reading state ordinance statements, okay, uh, noticed a place, do you have to stick with that? By itself, in a legislative context, no. Uh, where it's a quasi judicial matter involving people's due process rights and where the newspaper publication was in fact short, then yes. And in order for those other two cases, because they were quasi judicial, you have no question about the proper procedure. I, I strongly urge, and I very much appreciate your postponing indefinitely and starting over. Here, it's a, it's a legislative matter that doesn't carry those, the same kind of concern, and in fact, the key noticing requirement, which is the newspaper publication seven days was properly achieved.
Or additional questions from council, pardon me, before I close the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing and a motion is in order, Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. I move to approve council bill number zero seven twenty twenty in ordinance vacating any interest held by the city in a portion of Youngfield Service Road, a public roadway on second reading, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second.
Uh, there is a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council? If you're in favor of this motion, please raise your hand so the clerk can see your hand and register your vote.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you so much. We will move to, um, agenda item number three. Uh, Ms. Hutchinson, would you please introduce agenda item number three?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council bill number oh eight two oh two oh in ordinance amending article two of chapter nine of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning smoking in public places. Article two of chapter nine of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws is being amended to reflect changes to the state's smoking law upon, upon which the city's previous ordinance was based.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the time, date, and location for a public hearing. Uh, may I have a motion on this, Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve council bill number oh eight twenty twenty in ordinance amending article two of chapter nine of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning smoking in public places upon first reading. Order it published, public hearing set for Monday, May eleventh, twenty twenty at seven P M. as a virtual meeting and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second by Mr., uh, uh, Urban. Uh, will all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand so the clerk can see it and the clerk will record your, and this is for a yes vote.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will now go to agenda item number four. Ms. Hoppy, would you please introduce agenda item number four?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council bill number zero nine dash two zero two zero in ordinance amending chapter twenty-one of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning streets and sidewalks. At issue, chapter twenty-one of the Code of Laws entitled Streets and Sidewalks regulates all construction and, uh, operation activities in public rights, rights of way and needs a comprehensive revision. Specifically, this chapter is in need of updating for the public works effort to address a series of issues raised by construction activities of various utilities. This ordinance modifies the Code of Laws accordingly and has incorporated suggested language from a model ordinance used as a base by many other Colorado municipalities.
Thank you very much. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the date, time, and location for a public hearing. Uh, Ms. Hoppy, may I have a motion on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve council bill number zero nine two dash two zero two zero in ordinance amending chapter twenty-one of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning streets and sidewalks on first reading. Order published, public hearing set for May eleventh, twenty twenty at seven P M. as a virtual meeting and that it take effect fifteen days, fifteen days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppy. Is there discussion on the motion? Uh, actually seeing none, but it doesn't matter. It's an ordinance on first reading. We don't discuss those. Uh, will the, uh, will all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand so the clerk can record your vote.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can we quick also please record, Corey Stites was actually the second. I made the motion, Corey made the second.
Okay, uh, Mr. Stites, uh, thank you, is corrected to have made the second.
Mr. Mayor, with Mr. Stites second, the motion has still passed eight to nothing.
Thank you very much. Uh, we will, that concludes item number four. We will move to item number five. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce item number five?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is resolution number twenty-three dash twenty twenty, resolution approving the first amendment to the, to the public finance agreement between the city of Wheat Ridge, the Longspreek Metropolitan District, and Evergreen Dash Clear Creek Crossing LLC. City of Wheat Ridge entered into a public finance agreement, a PFA, with Evergreen Development Company on July ninth, two thousand and eighteen, to assist in the construction of the public improvements for the Clear Creek Crossing mixed-use project. The PFA contemplates the city imposing a series of tax credits on sales tax, lodging tax, and admission sales, tax sales. As this project has progressed and in the, in light of the new economic challenges caused by the COVID nineteen pandemic, Evergreen is requesting an amendment to the PFA to allow for a three percent tax credit on service sales to capture this additional revenue source to help pay for the public infrastructure required for this project.
Thank you. This is a resolution. Uh, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this issue?
I do, um, and also I'd like to introduce Tyler Carlson is, is here, um, with Evergreen and, um, Russell Newton, I think, is on the line somewhere too. He's with Longspreek, uh, Metropolitan District. Um, but the, the issue statement is, is pretty clear in this, and this item and your next item on the agenda, the PIF collecting agent agreement, um, are two agreements that the city has, um, with, with Evergreen and, and Longspreek Metropolitan District. And as council member Weaver mentions, um, the public finance agreement was adopted by city council back in two thousand and eighteen, and that con- contemplates the city, um, sharing, sharing back certain revenues, um, with the Longspreek Metropolitan District to help pay for, um, twenty million dollars worth of bonds that, um, are needed to build the public infrastructure required for the Clear Creek Crossing development. And as council member Weaver mentioned, the current public, um, finance agreement and the, the PIF collecting agreement, which you will, um, consider next, contemplate using, um, sales tax and lodger tax and admissions tax, um, sharing a portion of those back again to help pay for the public infrastructure. Um, and, and maybe, uh, Tyler can speak about this a little bit more, but, um, as you can all imagine, the, uh, the retail sector, um, has really changed. It's been changing over the last numerous years just because of online sales and, um, and then COVID nineteen is, is causing another, um, hiccup in kind of the retail market as we speak. Um, we're starting to see a lot of more of, um, selling less of goods that are taxable under Colorado state law and Wheat Ridge law and selling more of services which are not taxable today. Um, so, uh, Evergreen and Longspreek is, is, um, requesting that, um, we amend the public finance agreement and the PIF collecting agreement so that, um, a service, a, a public improvement fee can be added on to the sales of services. And, um, Tyler and Evergreen is, um, negotiating with several different tenants that, um, hopefully going to come to Click Creek Crossing that, that provides services, and they've agreed, um, to, um, allow a, a public improvement fee to be put on top of their sales of their services. So I think, um, I'm gonna, hopefully I didn't butcher that, Tyler. Um, I'll turn that over to Tyler and, and let him, and if Russ is on to, um, speak to this, this issue.
Mr. Carlson, uh, Carlson, thank you for joining us. Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's good to see everyone remotely, and, um, I should also let you guys know that Carolyn White with, uh, Brownstein is also on the line if we need her advice. She is the attorney who helped draft the actual covenants and PFAs that are before you tonight. Um, and I think, uh, Mr. Goff did a great job of explaining it. You know, the, the catalyst for this request actually started back around the holiday season last year where we were approached by a couple of very interesting, um, tenants for the project, uh, some of which were actually larger anchors, uh, but they all were service providers of, of varying natures. And, you know, that put us in a challenging position because we had end users that we thought would be accretive to the project that would drive co-tenancy and, and the action and, uh, that the other smaller format tenants were looking to benefit from, but because they were service providers, they did not provide any tax revenues for the district. And that's really important, uh, for our public-private partnership because, uh, you know, the district is the conduit for not only financing, um, our improvements within the project, but also for repaying the city for any funds it expends on the highway above and beyond the ten million dollars allocated, uh, within the, you know, two E, um, ballot initiative. So we approached city staff with this concept of a service PIF. Uh, it would be assessed like a sales tax, but if someone goes into the, the nail salon, for example, to have their, their nails done, um, you know, they would be charged a, you know, three percent PIF on the cost of that nail service, uh, just like they would be charged a sales tax if they, you know, bought a bottle of nail polish. Um, and the feedback we received from the end users was, um, you know, they weren't thrilled about it, uh, some of them because they, the, it's, it's not a normal, uh, course of action, but they understood it, and they also recognized that, you know, they, they would rather assess the service PIF than not be allowed to be in this project. Um, I guess is a probably the straightest way of saying it. So, um, the, the reception from the market was, uh, positive, and we believe we've created some documents before you tonight that allow that to happen and will really allow us to, uh, you know, negotiate deals with any end user regardless of whether they produce sales or services for the financial benefit of our partnership with the city of Wheat Ridge. And with that, um, I think I'll just turn it back to you guys for any questions anyone might have for Carolyn or Russ on maybe the legal details of the documents.
Thank you. Before we, um, before we do go to questions from council, I would like to, to open it up to members of the public. If I have members of the public out there who would like to speak on this item, I will entertain your comments now. Please indicate you would like to speak and I will recognize you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item at this time? And I will check the raise hand feature on the Zoom.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, yes, this is, uh, do I have someone who would like to speak?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, uh, you know, the, just so you know, the system just unmuted me, so there might be other people as well. Uh, my name is Oderika Sigluss. My num-, uh, my address is one zero five eight zero West Thirty-Fourth Avenue. May I begin?
You may.
So, uh, I'd just like to say a couple of things. One is that I have, uh, actually four questions. Uh, first goes to, it seems that this is premature because Evergreen says in the packet that, uh, they need more revenue sources because of COVID. But it's my understanding that they can't really collect any revenue until they actually start selling or producing things. For example, you can't collect sales tax until you actually make sales. So, uh, they're not anywhere close to completing con-, uh, construction. How can they say at this point that they're, what the impact of COVID is going to be at some point far in the future? I know they've mentioned something else, but I'm going by what's in the packet. Um, the second question is, uh, have you as council reviewed the numbers? Uh, and if so, why aren't those numbers in the packets? Now, none of us can go to a financial institution and say, we need more money because we need it and please give it to us. You have to have the numbers. And so, um, uh, and even the statement that is in the packet seems to refer to the original proposal and doesn't seem to refer at all to the statement about the effects of COVID. Uh, and it seems to me that it's really up to council to take a good look at the numbers. You might, staff can advise you, but it's still your responsibility as council to make sure that you know exactly what you're signing and why. The third thing is, are you creating a new kind of tax? I don't think that we have a service tax in Wheat Ridge at this point. And it, I'm sure there's a loophole that allows you to create a new tax for, uh, a metro district, but it really kind of goes against the spirit of our constitutional amendment of Tabor, and at least where was the discussion of what the implications of having this kind of tax is? And I think that we should at least have that public discussion before you agree to a new type of tax. And then finally, uh, since the time that the original agreement was signed, the Denver Post ran a series of articles that was a disturbing expose of the abuses that can come to be perpetrated by metro districts. Now, I'm not saying anything about Evergreen because I don't know what, or this metro district, I don't know how it was set up, but in light of those articles, in the light of the new information that's come to light, have you as a council reviewed, um, what this metro district is all about and can you assure the people of Wheat Ridge that these abuses cannot happen in this case? And I understand that we're bound by the agreements that we already signed, but this is new. They want an amendment that's an opportunity for you to go in and review and make sure that, uh, we won't end up with these problems in the future as, uh, were stated in the articles in the Denver Post. So those are my four questions. I hope you can answer them. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Goff and Mr. Carlson. Would you all like to, uh, work on an answer on those?
Yeah, I'll turn it over to, uh, Tyler's team.
Okay, sure. Absolutely. Um, and, and thank you to the resident who asked these questions, as you're all very good and will thought, thought out questions. Uh, so, and I'll take a couple of them, then I'll also defer to Carolyn White to answer one of them. The first was, you know, how is this tied to COVID? And as I indicated previously, uh, while the requ-, while the catalyst for this service PIF request occurred, uh, you know, prior to COVID nineteen happening, uh, it, this crisis has certainly heightened, um, the district's need to look for as many revenue sources as we can find going forward. Uh, it's no secret that, uh, this crisis is hitting retail companies, uh, the hardest, especially those in the food service, food industry and, and the hospitality industry. And it's our anticipation that there will be a deterioration in expansion of those types of businesses, you know, for, you know, quite some time. Uh, and meanwhile, uh, you know, we need to continue to provide revenue sources for the district to pay for all the infrastructure out there and as indicated previously to also repay the city, uh, for its shares of the highway improvements above and beyond ten million dollars. And so this is really a preemptive, uh, strike, I guess, uh, to help us make sure that we have sufficient revenue to... sufficient revenue to pay for all those obligations in the future. And because as Mr. Goff had mentioned, services are increasingly a part of any shopping center and that percentage has actually grown. This year, for the first time in the history of shopping centers, there are more service-oriented tenants in shopping centers than tenants selling goods. And that's never been the case. Services had always been a minority in terms of, you know, gross leaseable area, number of new tenants expanding. And this was the tipping point year where services actually overtook actual sales of goods in most centers. So it's a preemptive strike against that. But she's right, we won't be able to collect on any of this until we're further down the road. I would also say that the reason why there is no quote numbers in the packets is because it's, we're unable at this point to project, you know, the types of revenue that will come to the district or to the city as a result of this service PIF. And so because we aren't able to make projections or done frankly to give to the city, but what I can tell you is this will make sure that users who come to Clear Creek don't slip through the financial cracks. And this happens in a lot of shopping center deals where there is a public-private partnership struck with, you know, rosy financial projections of sales taxes that everyone will benefit, will enjoy over the years. And, you know, when actual leasing happens, you know, those projections sometimes don't come to fruition because there have been service providers who have leased space who do not pay into the city sales tax funds. And so what this PIF will do is allow us to not have those types of users slip through the cracks. We will receive revenue from them. Those revenues, you know, will flow to the district, which will help pay for the infrastructure and also help repay the city, which we think is a win for both sides. And then, you know, I'll let, I'll turn the time over to, you know, Carolyn White to talk about, you know, whether this is a tax or a fee. It's actually a fee and it does work within Tabor, but I'll let her explain that. And then after Carolyn, maybe Russ Newton can, who's our metro district attorney, can speak to, you know, how our district is set up and how it avoids some of the abuses that were highlighted by those Denver Post articles. So with that, if it's okay with you, Mr. Mayor, I would love to share the spotlight with Carolyn White and then Russ Newton.
Ms. White, welcome and please proceed.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Carolyn White, Land Use Council and Public Finance Council for Evergreen Development. And yeah, just, I wanted to be really, really clear about that. The revenue source that we're talking about here, a services PIF, is not a tax. It is a fee imposed by private contract between two private parties by means of a covenant, a document that's recorded against the property and basically says anybody who engages in a transaction on that property agrees to collect and remit the fee. And it's not money out of the city's pocket because the city doesn't have a tax right now on this particular type of category of business activity. It's a private contract. And really, the only thing that the city is being asked to do here with these two documents tonight is to allow the district to use this as a revenue source to replace revenue that it otherwise was previously authorized to receive under the PFA, namely an add-on sales tax PIF. But however, for all the reasons that were explained by Tyler Carlson, in the event that the, there end up being more service businesses here than retail sales tax generating businesses, we want to make sure that those service businesses still pay their fair share of the infrastructure and don't get a free ride just because those services are not taxed the same way that retail sales are taxed. So it's really a substitute for a revenue source that was already estimated, anticipated, and authorized based on the changing trends of what types of tenants are likely to go in these locations. One other comment I'll make about that, you notice that you're not approving the PIF covenant document tonight, and that is because it's a private contract between two private parties and doesn't require city council approval. What you're considering is the ability for the project to substitute that revenue stream for one that was already in the PFA. And then if you approve the PIF collecting agreement, then the city is agreeing to serve as the collection agent for that other revenue stream, the same way that you already do for the sales tax and the add-on sales tax. So it's not a Tabor issue, it's not a tax, it doesn't require a vote of the people, it's a fee imposed by private contract, and that's why it's not a legal issue. And I also want to mention it's not a fee of the district, it's a fee of the private landowner, in this case, Evergreen Development. So let me just stop there, but of course, happy to answer any further questions that you or the public may have about it.
Thank you very much. And I'm sorry, Mr. Carlson, I don't, I can't recall whether I'm going back to you or to Mr. Newton.
To Mr. Newton, please.
Mr. Newton, welcome to our meeting. Please proceed.
Thank you. And the question was in regards to the Denver Post articles and ensuring that the Longspreek Metropolitan District does not fall into the category of special district abuses that have been reported on. The district recently, in 2018, along hand in hand with all of this, amended its service plan with the goal of updating it for this project and to be as transparent as possible about what the district can and cannot do. All of the financing arrangements have been in step with the city and have been third-party reviewed. And, and the district, you know, that's, that's my job is to make sure that it is in compliance with all the notice requirements, its electoral authority, everything that goes along with the, with the public government, just like, you know, Jerry's job is for the City of Wheat Ridge. So very confident that the district is doing everything the right way and in the way that is the best for the public health, safety, and welfare of the community, the city and the district.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Carlson, on this question or Mr. Goff?
Yeah, I would add just one thing, Mr. Mayor, on the topic of transparency. In every single letter of intent and every single contract, every single lease in Clear Creek Crossing, you know, we very explicitly disclose upfront that this project is part of the city urban renewal area. It's in the metro district that PIFs are assessed. And, you know, we are within the context of this particular district only dealing with professional companies. It's, some districts have a challenge because, you know, they are the preponderance of their property owners or private individuals and, you know, and homeowners who are less sophisticated in the matters of real estate law and districts and things of that nature. In, in our district right now, there are no homeowners, there will be no homeowners. There will ultimately be some renters who rent homes in the apartment community that's currently under construction. But there's, you know, no one who will be buying a piece of property and, and not understand frankly what they're getting into. So that's one of the big distinctions, I think, that our district has from many of those disclosed in that Denver Post article series, which those were primarily residential districts with homeowners who did not fundamentally understand what they were buying into and felt like they had a taxation without representation problem because, you know, they had no way of changing the trajectory of a district within which they owned a home. Here, we will not have that problem just because it's a commercially driven district.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, did you have something to add there?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one, one item, make sure that the public and council understands that the only really term that is changing in our agreement on this project is, is adding this new revenue source ability. Not, nothing else is changing. We're not going to be giving any more money to the project. That is already capped and set at the $20 million bonds. And, you know, the city is contributing the $10 million also from our 2E funds for the hook ramps, but nothing else changes except for adding a new revenue source.
Thank you. I, or do I have any other additional questions from the public? We will, if you would like, or from the public and would like to...
There's somebody's got their hand up, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, let me go to the, let me go to the hands. And Mrs. Orina Morozovich, pardon me if I don't pronounce your name correctly. If you would please give us your name and address and then you may speak.
Sure. Sorry, Anna Morozovich, 3651 Ward Road. My question is, since Lutheran provides a service, are we going to be taxed on that service when we go to visit them there? And also, I just pulled up a Denver Post article that says Colorado's metro district developers among the biggest campaign contributors. So I'm really curious as to how much you've contributed towards anything that's going on here in Wheat Ridge, including any elections.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Yes, happy to answer that question. While the actual PIF covenant itself is not being approved by the city, what I can tell you is that the covenant that we will be recording on the property, should the PFA amendment and the PIF collection agreement be approved tonight, excludes both healthcare expenses and, or healthcare services, excuse me, and financial services. We in no way want to step into federal healthcare and insurance regulation and payments, nor do we want to touch banking regulations or anything of that nature. So I think the resident should rest assured that this will in no way impact Lutheran's, you know, provision of services or what they charge. Lutheran is already subject to the sales tax PIFs for something you maybe buy in the gift shop, for example. You know, those, you know, those sales would be part of the existing public-private partnership with the city, but they are not, you know, but their healthcare services will not be impacted by this at all, nor will, we have, we have a pending transaction with, you know, Foothills Credit Union, for example, that will be going to planning commission here, hopefully in the next, you know, 45 days. And, you know, their services, for example, as a banker credit union, are also excluded. And I can also say that Evergreen nor myself personally have contributed any campaigns in Wheat Ridge. We're big supporters. We've contributed money to charitable events and social events within the community that we support. We always try to be a part of the, the local community and, and make sure that we're putting our mouth, our money where our mouths are, but we have not attempted to influence any elections before, before council, that is for sure.
Thank you. Are there any more comments from the public on this item? I don't hear any, so we will close public comments. I will open it for questions from council. Raise your hand if you have a question. Ms. Dozeman?
So my first question is like what the education is around the project for notifying consumers of the fees and taxes? Because I know a lot of times it's mostly just on your receipt and so you're not really subject to knowing what the, what all fees are involved until after you've already purchased an item or a service in this case. And then my second question would be like, what is the full percentage of either taxes or fees? Can you just give like a, an outline of all of them?
Sure thing. Councilman, thank you very much. So I'm gonna have to go off the memory here a little bit, so on, on all the fees, but I, real quickly, on the disclosures, and Carolyn can certainly correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe under law, not only does the PIF need to be disclosed on your receipt, but it also needs to be generally disclosed on the cash register, the point of sale. And, you know, certainly we would encourage, and I think even maybe on the menus, if it's a sales tax PIF, is there anything else, Carolyn, that is required under law or just a best practice?
Um, Mayor, Council, to, to be really technical, none of those things are required by law, but they are best practices and, and certainly we intend to undertake them here. So the typical best practices include not only on the receipt, but point, some type of point of sale, placard or notification at the register, if there is one. Some types of service businesses might not have a physical register or a counter that, you know, looks like you're used to checking out in a, in a retail sales shop. And there are other ways that they can comply with that disclosure when people, you know, sign up and make an appointment for the service so that they have full awareness that they're going to be charged this fee. I'm just talking about the service one now. For the sale, and the service total cumulative amount will be only the 3% that is referenced here because there are no other taxes on services. For the sales tax, I might kick it back to Tyler to do the math because I don't have the base numbers in my head, but so that I will just say best practices that are followed elsewhere in other centers where this type of fee applies, we intend to follow all of them here and that includes disclosure other than on the receipt at the point of sale.
Correct.
Tyler, I have the numbers in front of me if you want to.
Yeah, go for it, Patrick, please, thank you.
I think, Ms. Dozeman, you were asking about the other tax shares that we're going to, the credits, credit, tax credits that are part of this deal? Was that your question?
Yep. So, yeah, and this is, this was all approved in the public finance agreement back in 2018. So the city has agreed, again, this is to help support a $20 million bond. The city will share 1.5% sales tax credit PIF. But that's what's committed for the bonds, but we anticipate based on the revenues that are anticipated from, at least when this deal was, was approved in 2018, that the, the city will receive a rebate once that tax credit reaches a certain amount. So the effective rate of what the city's going to be sharing in a sales tax is, we believe, closer to 0.4% of our, of the city's 3%. And 5% of the city's lodgers tax will be shared as a tax credit PIF, 2.5% of our admissions tax as a credit PIF, and then adding now the 3% services tax credit PIF. The Longspreek Metropolitan District is also providing revenue sources for the project. They have a 35 property tax mill on their properties that will be used to pay off bonds and then also a half a percent sales tax add-on PIF, half a cent, half a percent lodgers tax add-on PIF and a half a percent admissions tax add-on PIF. I think we caught everything there.
Yeah, you, you did, Patrick. One just point of clarification is technically the services PIF will be a quote, you know, add-on PIF because it doesn't currently exist. So if anything, the project will be paying a greater proportion of revenue towards it because if you replace sales taxes with the PIF, service PIF revenue, you're, it's less money out of the city's pocket in theory and it's more money just coming from the district's side of the ledger. So it'll actually help buy down your effective sales tax sharing ratio even more.
Are there additional questions from council? Saying none, Ms. Weaver, may I have a motion on agenda, item number five?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number 23-2020, a resolution approving the First Amendment to the public finance agreement by and between the City of Wheat Ridge, the Longspreek Metropolitan District, and Evergreen Clear Creek Crossing LLC.
Who had the second?
Ms. Hoppe.
Ms. Hoppe, we have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion on the motion? Saying none, will all those in favor of the motion please signify by raising your hand and the clerk will record your vote.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. It is now 9:19. We're going to take a, an 11-minute recess and we will reconvene at 9:30. Thank you. Okay, it is nine thirty PM. I'm going to reconvene the city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for April twenty-seven, twenty twenty. We will start with item, agenda item number six. Mr. Stites, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number twenty-four dash twenty twenty, a resolution approving the First Amendment to the PIF collection, PIF collecting agency agreement among the City of Wheat Ridge, the Longspreek Metropolitan District and Evergreen Clear Creek Crossing LLC. At issue, the Longspreek Metropolitan District, Evergreen Clear Creek Crossing LLC and the City of Wheat Ridge entered into a public financing agreement, PFA, for the Clear Creek Crossing Multi-Use Development Project on July ninth, two thousand eighteen. The PFA provides for the use of public improvement fees, PIFs, to support bonds for the construction of public improvements associated with the project. The PIF collecting agency agreement appoints the city as collecting agent for purposes of receiving, collecting, administrating, administering, remitting and dispersing all PIF revenue percent to the terms of the PFA. As this project has progressed and in light of the new economic challenges caused by COVID-nineteen pandemic, Evergreen is requesting an amendment to the PIF collecting agency agreement to allow for a three percent tax credit on service sales to capture this additional revenue source to help pay for public infrastructure required for this project.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Do we have a staff report on this?
Yeah, the issue statement pretty much covers this and then the, the discussion we just had on the last item covers, covers this item too. It's just that this is a separate agreement with city. We, we have agreed to be the, the collecting agent for the district and the city will receive a, a two percent fee for doing that. And so we just need to amend this agreement to allow this new revenue source to be added also to this agreement.
Okay, thank you very much. I would like to open this up to the public for a comment on this. Is there anyone in the public who would like to comment on agenda item number six? Please indicate by speaking and I will recognize you. I don't see anyone on the Zoom hand. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Please speak now. Okay, I don't hear anyone wishing to speak, so we will go to questions from council on, on the staff report. Any questions on this item? Hearing none, Mr. Stites, may I have a motion on this?
Mr. Mayor.
Oh, one moment. I, I see Ms. Hutchinson has a question. You're muted?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
So, Mr. Goff, can you go over again, how is this different than the thing we just heard about? As far as the extra percentage of whatever going to what? Collecting the money? Is that what it's for?
Yeah, this, this is just an agreement between the city and the, and the district for the, the city to actually collect these credit PIFs and add-on PIFs. Or not the add-on, right? We'll just collect the credit PIFs. And then we'll distribute the city, as we collect sales tax, the city will also collect these PIFs and then we'll distribute that money back to the district which they'll use to pay off the, the, the bonds for the public infrastructure. So no, nothing's changed from the last item that we discussed. All the numbers are the same. This is just, this is just amending this agreement that says the city will be that collecting agent to collect that PIF.
So I guess I'm wondering why does the city have to do this? Why doesn't the district do this?
Usually it, where there's a district like this in a city, it's, it's usually a city or a, a third-party agency that the district contracts with. And we, we feel that the city is, has the experience and background to collect taxes and fees. We have the experience to do it. It just makes sense for the, the vendors to submit both their sales tax and, and the PIF to, to the same agency. So it's, it's better for the, the tenants that are going to be out there. It's less confusing. And, yeah, I think, and, and we'll get paid for it.
Okay, so and then when you're talking about tenants, are there going to be people who actually own property there? Or they're just going to be running it?
Tyler, you want to speak to that?
Sure thing. There'll be a mixture of both. We have some end users who prefer to own their own property and they're purchasing land from Evergreen, you know. One, we've had two sales already, you know, ones to a, our multifamily group for building the multifamily project. We've also sold land, as you guys all know, to SCL Health for their own development of their property and based upon the approval of the vacation, the right-of-way vacation earlier this evening, we'll now be able to move forward with our closing with, you know, come-and-go gas stations. They'll buy their own property. So there'll be a lot of tenants or a lot of operators, excuse me, who will own their property. But there's also a number of users who prefer to lease and some do a land lease, others, you know, will, will have Evergreen, you know, build a structure for them. And they will just lease the building from us or in the context of our, you know, Harvest Village, a portion of the project, our Small Shops Village. There'll be several tenants who, you know, lease smaller spaces from Evergreen. So it'll be a wide variety of ownerships depending upon who the prospective tenants are.
Okay, I have a question on that. As far as the Metropolitan, Metropolitan District goes, thirty-five mill levy, is that what I heard it was?
That's the portion of the mill levy that is dedicated to the debt service. The total mill levy authorized, I believe, is fifty-five mils, but we plan on actually levying around fifty, thirty-five for debt service and fifteen for operations.
Okay, and what happens in a couple of years? Is it going to stay at that or is it going to go up?
So the, the, the mill levies are capped in the service plan, so we can't increase them, but there is something under Colorado law called Gallagherization, which you may have heard that term and under the Gallagher Amendment, under the Colorado law, there's a fixed ratio between commercial and residential property tax collections that's established by law. And so whenever there's a reduction in the residential assessment ratio, there's what's called a Gallagher effect, which ratchets up the commercial property mill levies to offset the reduction in the residential assessment ratio so that everything is equalized. It might explain that well enough, Carolyn. And so there, there will be some Gallagher increases, but it's not to do with us. It's because of state law. Is that fair to say?
Well, my one concern is about metro districts is, and I get it how you say you're all good. But for people who own property there, increasing in mill levies and that, I would hate to see where there would be property where it ends up where people cannot afford to be there because the tax rate has gone up too much. Which has happened before with metro districts.
Yes, you, you are preaching to the choir, sister, because both Carolyn and I sit on industry boards consulting with the state legislature on this issue. There is a significant commercial property tax problem in the state, you know, with or without metro districts. And it's, it's a real issue and it, it does frankly impact our leasing because, you know, for any given operator, especially a tenant, they can only afford to pay so much in total occupancy costs, whether that's taxes or rent or whatever. And so the more they have to pay in taxes, frankly, the less they can pay in rent. Because they've only got a certain amount of revenues to pay for all their bills. So it, it's a material issue and we're thoughtful and cautious about it. And that's why we also upfront disclose the districts. We make our own tax projections for our tenants. They have an understanding of what they're getting into. But ultimately, all of it is frankly subject to the assessors and how aggressively they assess properties. And that's without all of our controls and until we can convince the state legislator to take up the issue and deal with it with a state tax administrator.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from council? Seeing none, Ms. Stites may have a motion on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number twenty-four dash twenty twenty, a resolution approving the First Amendment to the PIF collecting agent agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge, Longspreek Metropolitan District and Evergreen Clear Creek Crossing LLC.
We have a motion and a second by Ms. Hoppe. Is that correct?
Hulteen.
Hulteen. Okay, I'm sorry. Is there a, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. If all those in favor, please raise your hand and the clerk will record the votes.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number seven. Ms. Hulteen, would you introduce this item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number twenty-one twenty, a resolution concerning the leaseback of property located at thirty-eight oh five Wadsworth Boulevard, the Five G Holdings LLC, DBA Midas. At issue, in April twenty fifteen, the city was awarded funding through the Denver Regional Council of Governments, Dr. Cog, Transportation Improvement Program, TIP, to improve Wadsworth Boulevard from Thirty-Fifth Avenue to Forty-Eighth Avenue. Local funding for the project was also generated with the voters' twenty sixteen approval of the two E ballot measure for a temporary one-half cent sales tax and use tax. for a temporary one-half cent sales tax and use tax, uh, rate increase. The proposed improvements to Wadsworth Boulevard require that additional right-of-way, R O W, be purchased in order to facilitate the acquisition of property at 3805 Wadsworth and the subsequent relocation of the current tenant Midas. City Council must approve a resolution authorizing leasing the property back to Midas for a limited period of time.
Uh, thank you. Um, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this item?
I, I believe, or, um, we have both Ken Johnstone and, and Mark Westberg here. Um, do you guys have a staff report or just questions?
We don't have anything formally. We're just here to answer questions and, um, this is a pretty straightforward deal. They just take a while. It takes a while to move a muffler shop and they want to close so they have the money so they can move their muffler shop. And so we're just leasing the property back to them for, um, until the end of September is the plan right now.
Okay, thank you. Uh, before we go to questions from council, I will open this up for, um, comments from the public. Is there anyone, a member of the public who would like to speak at this time? Please, uh, indicate by saying something and I will recognize you to speak.
Can you hear Vivian?
Yes, ma'am. I can hear Vivian. Please, uh, please introduce yourself and you may speak.
Vivian Ross, 6920 with 47th place. Could the explanation of why the property and to what extent and for what reason Midas needs to vacate that property is necessary? Thank you.
Okay, is there any other, uh, member of the public who would like to, uh, ask or to speak at this time? Please so indicate and I will call on you and you may speak. Anyone else in the public who would like to speak on this issue? Okay, I'm going to close the, um, public portion and, uh, Mr. Goff, do we have any, any reply on that question?
Um, yeah, we, we'll let Mr. Westburg respond to that briefly.
Mr. Westburg?
So with the widening project, the sidewalk is going to be 10 to 15 feet away from the front doors of the garage. And, um, they don't think they can continue to function as a muffler shop um, under that scenario. They're losing their parking they have out in front. And those things, they had tried to stay at that location. We'd actually looked at that option where they could maybe lease some parking spaces from one of their neighbors and that didn't work out. And so they're in the process of uh, we, we have to acquire the property because they can't continue to function the way they are with, with the amount of ground we're leaving them.
Thank you. We will open this up for questions from council of staff. Anyone have a question for our staff on this issue? Please raise your hand. I don't see any questions, so, uh, Miss Halteen, may I have a, a motion on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution number 21-2020, a resolution concerning the leaseback of property located at 3805 Wadsworth Boulevard to 5G Holdings LLC, DBA Midas.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Ms. Weaver. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will vote. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to, um, agenda item number eight. Ms. Dozeman, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number 22-2020, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Wheat Ridge and Roy's Mountain Home LLC regarding Robb Street Regional Detention Pond. At issue, Mountain Gateway, a proposed new light industrial development project in the City of Arvada is required to construct stormwater detention facilities. Rather than constructing the facilities on their property and to promote efficient land use, Mountain Gateway is proposing to expand the Ridge Road Regional Pond to provide the required stormwater detention. The pond is owned by the City of Wheat Ridge with the Mile High Flood District assisting in maintaining the pond. This resolution approves a memorandum of, of understanding, MOU, allowing Mountain Gateway to construct those facilities and outlines the conditions between the two parties for the expansion of the pond.
Uh, thank you. And, um, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff report on this?
We do. That's also Mr. Westburg.
Mr. Westburg, please proceed.
Yeah, so again, just really quickly, we, uh, council heard the, a related item of this, the land transfer that took place, I, I believe it was back in December. And so since that time, we've been working on finalizing this MOU to, um, establish all the conditions and stuff to, to make all that happen. And, and they got held up a little bit by Arvada and then we, we kind of got slowed down by the COVID thing, but um, we've gotten this in front of council now. This just, uh, finishes out all of that.
Thank you very much. Uh, I will open this up to, uh, comments from the public. If there are a member of the public who would like to speak on agenda item number eight, I will entertain your, uh, you right now. Is there someone who would like to speak on this? Please, uh, please so indicate and I will call on you and you may speak on this. Do I have someone who would like to speak on this issue? I hear some background noise, but I don't hear anyone as, asking to speak. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to speak on agenda item number eight? Okay, I will close the public comment on that and I will open this up for questions of council. Do we have questions, uh, of council for staff on this issue? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Dozeman, may I have a motion on agenda item number eight?
I move to approve resolution number 22-2020, a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Wheat Ridge and Roy's Mountain Home LLC regarding Robb Street Regional Detention Pond.
Second.
We have a motion. Who was the second on that? Mr. Stites. We have a, uh, motion and a second. Do we have discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Will all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and the clerk will record your vote.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. We will go to agenda item number nine. Mr. Urban, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number nine is resolution 25-2020, a resolution recognizing and declaring the public purpose and importance of the city's business stabilization program and making findings in connection therewith. At issue, the city has created the Business Stabilization Program for eligible businesses within the city to assist them in response to the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. This resolution documents the public purpose for expenditures of city funds in aid of private businesses to be consistent with requirements of the Colorado Constitution.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Goff, do we have a, uh, presentation on this, um, item?
Yeah, Mr. Dahl.
Mr. Dahl.
Thank you very much. Uh, as council member Urban recited in the issue, uh, we have a requirement in the Colorado Constitution titled No Aid to Private Corporations. And for you history buffs, on August the 1st, 1876, you all were, that's Colorado Day. Colorado became, uh, a state and that's why we're the centennial state, of course. Um, but in any event, in that era, uh, railroads were being built across the West and constitution, the railroads were sort of telling cities, we're on the rail line through your city if maybe you would pay us. And so constitutions for new states in the West commonly included a prohibition on direct aid to corporations to really combat that, that kind of, of effort. So it's a little bit of a history lesson. In any event, of course, that provision's been now in the Colorado Constitution for about 154 years. And, uh, it is common, of course, to have business assistance programs of various sorts. Very important. We have economic development departments in almost every city uh, in, in the state. And there has grown up by case law, a well-recognized public purpose exception to that prohibition so that those programs can take place. But it's important to recite what the public purpose of spending of public funds in aid of private businesses, uh, is. And you can well recognize that the public purpose in keeping retail businesses alive and actually operating in the city at this time is enormously important of a purpose, given the, the fact that the city gets revenues directly from those businesses through sales tax and those businesses are really the lifeblood of a community. Small businesses, uh, is what often makes up a good part of what we think of as a community. And so there's certainly a public purpose for the city uh, and its economic stabilization program that the council initiated. But of course, we had to work quickly on March the 30th, when that ordinance, I think, was just introduced on the spot uh, to create that program. And I wanted to back that resolution up with some additional declarations to be consistent with the public purpose doctrine that has grown up around that constitutional provision. And, uh, I appreciate your indulgence in allowing me to do this sort of in two parts. Sort of quick declarations we made on March the 30th and this, uh, resolution here, which, which helps to cement the public purpose for that program. And I realize, I think, that payments under that program are not going out now, they soon will be. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Before we take questions of council, I, I want to, uh, open this up for, uh, comments from the public. Is there anyone in the public who would like to, um, comment on agenda item number nine? Now is your opportunity. If you would like to unmute yourself and request, uh, permission to speak, I will recognize you. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on, uh, agenda item number nine? I don't hear anyone. Once again, is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on agenda item number nine? Okay, we will close our public comment and I will open it to, uh, questions from council and start with Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there questions for the city attorney as it relates to voting on this particular item? Is there anything that would preclude council members from voting on this item?
No, I appreciate your, your asking the question. This item, uh, supports a program. And, uh, whether individual council members have businesses that may or may not, uh, apply to that program, uh, is not affected by this, this resolution. Because this resolution supports the program as a, as a policy. Uh, it is not a resolution that provides money for council member X's business, for example. That would be something that councilman would step down on, but I hear you're, you're establishing findings and supporting a, a general policy. No different. I appreciate the question because no different than the council say voting on a some kind of business tax or fee that's going to affect a number of businesses. Council members can vote on those, those programs because it's program-wide and it's not specific to one business. Even though their business may be affected, it's not, not about their business. It's about the program. And this is about the program's support of the program. And so all council members are enabled and must, uh, vote unless they have some other reasons to step down. I don't believe that. Thanks for asking.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions from council of, uh, staff on this item? Uh, seeing none, uh, Mr. Urban, may I have a motion on agenda item number nine?
I move to approve resolution 25-2020, a resolution recognizing and declaring the public purpose and importance of the city's business stabilization program and making findings in connection therewith.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Mr. Stites. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. Uh, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and the clerk will record your vote.
Mr. Mayor, the motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. That concludes our, our, uh, the business portion of our meeting. I'd like to turn now to, uh, city managers matters. Mr. Goff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, due to the late hour, I'll just keep it to one item, quick item. Um, I think we mentioned to you, uh, over the last week, that Jefferson County did receive their portion of the CARES Act funding. It's about a hundred million dollars and, uh, the, the commissioners are, um, discussing this tomorrow. So, um, if and how they're going to share that money with the cities. So if you want to make some late night calls here and, and encourage your, your commissioners, county commissioners to, uh, to, uh, share that with us, that would be awesome. Um, the great news is we did get some further guidance from the U.S. Treasury Department on the use of these funds. And our business recovery program is eligible. So if we get some funding from the county, um, we'll be reimbursed for this first allotment. And then if you guys want to talk about potentially putting more, as he's shaking his head. And, uh, and then there's other items too. We got a little bit more, um, direction on, so, um, so some good news, um, there, but, um, we still have to get the money from the county. So um, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Uh, city attorney matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight. I appreciate council's, uh, help, uh, on the earlier matters. It, uh, it helps my job and makes that process move more smoothly. I appreciate your operation on that.
Thank you very much. We'll go to elected officials matters and I would like to start with our, uh, clerk and Mr. Kirkpatrick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one item. We have had a lot of discussions before this evening and during this evening session about how best to make comments entered in Wheat Ridge Speaks available to council, available as part of the minutes and available to the public. We are investigating ways to do that. I'm working with other staff members about uh, how we can use the software we purchased for this purpose to make a permanent record or make the record searchable. However, these aren't my minutes. They are the council's minutes and they are the public's minutes. So I would like to ask Mayor Pro Tem Hoppy to put an item on the study session agenda next week for council to give me, uh, guidance on exactly how and where and in what manner we would like to make sure that comments entered under Wheat Ridge Speaks are transparently provided to both council and the public. If you can do that, I would greatly appreciate it. And I have to, once again, thank the people and the city staff and the mayor and council for the amazing response we have seen to COVID-19. I don't think we can thank the staff or the citizens often enough or loudly enough. So I am ignoring people by doing it every chance I get.
Thank you. Um, I would like to, uh, invite city treasurer Chris Miller. I don't know if Mr. Miller's on the line, but I would invite him to speak if he is. And I, I haven't seen him, so we will, uh, go on there. I would like to next go to, um, Ms. Nosler Beck.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I, uh, wanted to follow up on an idea that Mayor Starker, um, circulated around to the counselors, um, earlier today regarding, um, celebrating Wheat Ridge High School seniors and area seniors. Um, and I had talked with, uh, Councilwoman Dozeman and I would like to ask if, uh, if council, um, would support me in, um, putting on an upcoming study session, um, how the city and how we can honor, um, high school seniors and their families in this, this major achievement, um, in one of our upcoming study sessions. And you guys, I'm tired. I don't know if that made any sense. Good, good.
Thank you very much for bringing, yeah.
And then also I just wanted to also, um, thank everybody. Um, I know that Patrick, you took a, a lot of lumps along with some of the other staff, um, with this mask, um, emergency order and, um, just thanks for, for all that you did to keep us informed on both sides of, of the issue and what we were hearing from the community and, um, for being really responsive and and to all the staff on, um, keeping at least me educated on where we are with things, but also, um, the community. So um, I appreciated the conversation today with all the other counselors and thanks to everybody for just being so committed to, um, everyone's health right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Nosler Beck. I'll go to Ms. Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I want to just echo some thanks to everyone once again. Uh, I'm city staff, first responders. Um, I want to thank Chief Murtha for, uh, coming and speaking and also keeping a surprise of, of some of the issues that are facing, uh, our police department. Um, and I do want to get the message out there that the Carnation Festival Board is discussing, um, the Carnation Festival and there'll, there will be some official, um, messaging coming out in, in the next coming week. Um, so to look to that and I can update, um, after official word i- is decided and, and out to the public. So I just wanted, um, that to, that comment to be made. And then, um, I wanted to support, uh, council member Nosler Beck and maybe highlighting the seniors somehow. I don't know. Maybe we could get something on Channel 8, whether that's senior pictures or council member Nosler Beck and maybe highlighting the seniors somehow. I don't know. Maybe we could get something on Channel Eight, whether that's senior pictures or, and, and kind of like highlighting their accolades or like where they're going to college or what their plans are after high school. And, and I wanted to thank Mr. Urban for inviting me to adopt a senior. He created a Facebook group and I think that was a tremendous idea. So I wanted to thank you. And I, I know council members, Urban and Nosler Beck, and I think many others have been either contributing or, or helping get food for first responders, SCL Lutheran and, and our communities. I wanted to, I wanted to thank you, you both for that as well. And I did want to address one of the public comments from earlier in regards to information coming out of Lutheran. We have been doing a really good job at publishing any COVID nineteen updates on sclhealth.org. So it is on the onus of, of the constituent or, or whomever wants to get online and see that information, but it is out there and it is readily available. And to get that out there as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dozeman. We will now go to Mr. Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question for Ms. Hoppy. Does Mr. Kirkpatrick need any help getting that on the study session as far as Wheat Ridge Speaks?
He does need a second on that, but I'm not, I'll have to look at the schedule. I'm not sure if it can be on the next study session, but I definitely try to get it on somewhere really soon because I understand that we may not be in this platform for, for very long, but that we do plan on keeping the Wheat Ridge Speaks forever. So, or for as long as it works for us. So, yeah, if you would like to second him, with, support him with that, then I will start looking at the schedule.
Thank you. I will second that. I do think it's important that we make sure that those comments aren't going nowhere. And if there's a way that we can somehow make sure that the public knows who's seen that as far as the decision makers, I, I do think, I know that the, I think Ally kind of had a comment back about that last week, but I, I, I do really feel that it is important that the public knows who's seen those comments and who hasn't, especially as we move forward. I'll echo the thank you to everybody else and I'll, let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll go to Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have anything tonight.
Thank you so much. Miss Holteen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just continued gratitude for city staff and everyone who's serving our community right now. And I really want to especially thank our citizens. The last month, we are learning new ways of acting as a government, acting as a governing body and communicating with one another. And it's bumpy and it's been a little bit messy. And I want to just recognize that we've all brought our best. And I really appreciate the citizens who are taking their time to, you know, help daylight the aspects of our, our democracy and our city function that maybe need more attention in this. And I really am grateful for my peers on council that we've had, I think, really thorough and thoughtful policy discussions about that. I feel really proud that that's how we're responding. And I'm feeling good about where we are right now with it. But I just, I've been really grateful for that because we are learning something really new and shaping it in real time. And I think we've overall, you know, brought our best to it. So I just want to thank everyone. And I just want to wish Amanda's baby turkey good luck tonight. Baby turkeys.
Thank you, Ms., thank you, Ms. Holteen. We will go now to Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Quick update on the business stabilization program. We notified ninety-nine applicants that they were awarded an amount between five hundred and five thousand dollars. Twenty-six of those applicants received the full award of five thousand dollars. Seventy-three obviously remain funded proportionally. And we had an additional, I believe, forty applicants who did not qualify based on one criteria or another. So as we go into the second round, we just want to make sure that we use some of the lessons learned from this first round. And we would encourage the second round to include a caveat or what have you as it relates to those who are currently applying for a business license. Those who have submitted an application for license would be eligible for a second round of funding. But that they wouldn't receive those funds until their business license is fully issued. And then the, the businesses who applied during the first round, but who did not receive the full funding in that first round would be eligible to apply under the second round, but only up to a total of five thousand. So if they received two thousand in the first round, they could apply for up to three thousand in the second round. And so that's just some real basic caveats and lessons learned from that. And knowing that we're able to fund ninety-nine businesses in this first round without knowing whether there would be a second round or not, I think the committee was very happy with being able to come up with a formula that allowed us to do that. So I'll answer any questions after I'm done. And then the other thing was that on Facebook, I took my wife's great idea when she said, oh, you guys should do this here. There was a program in South Texas that allowed the residents of the community to adopt seniors via Facebook. So I created a adopt a high school senior Facebook page where Wheat Ridge High School. And so far, I believe we've had three high school seniors adopted from that. And the basic idea is that if you were to adopt someone through that page, that you provide them with a gift basket of gift cards and whatnot up to a value of about fifty dollars. And it's just a way to say, recognize the students and try to, you know, boost their spirits during this time. So check, take, take a look at that Facebook page and encourage you to adopt a senior. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Urban. And thanks, thanks to your committee. I know they did, they did yeoman work on that and did it in a hurry too. So, thank you. Ms. Hutchinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to give kudos to Megan's Place and Four Seasons Market. I heard segments on Channel Seven regarding those businesses and they're open and doing great. So I think that's good. I also want to say I really do like the howling at eight o'clock, but I think we could get a little louder. I, I do howling, but I'm not going to do it right now. And I would like to also address some more essential workers and those could be the plumbers, electricians, heating and air conditioning people and also their companies and also construction people who are still working throughout this whole situation. And I just want to say thank you to them because I know there are people on a couple blocks here that seems to be having a lot of work done at their houses. And just everyone, wear your mask. Thank you. Be safe.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Thank you very much. I think that kind of gets us almost to the end of our, end of our meeting. I want to thank you for, for a very good meeting. Our, our staff continues to do yeoman work in this, in this challenging time, but I think they've, they've really come together. And, and hopefully we are, we are meeting the needs of our constituents and our citizens. I'd like to thank Chief Murtha for coming tonight and being with us. I'd like to thank the people who, who called in and, and spoke. I know it's a, it's a little bit unfamiliar in this, in this, in this format. But I think it's, but I think it's really important that we hear your voices. I want to, I want to particularly thank all the citizens who, who contacted me and contacted other members of staff and other counselors to talk about this, the mask, the mask order that we, that we initiated last week. We, we initiated that order to study session. We put a, we put a week's notice out there before it went into effect. And we got, we got a good, a good round of feedback from our community. And that, I believe, helped us make better decisions. So I, I keep telling us, telling myself that we make better decisions when we listen, listen to a wide variety of, of opinions. These are new times. I was out in my yard today thinking back where I remember when I used to duck under the, under the desk at my school for, for an atomic bomb blast. And, and, you know, I've been through the Vietnam War and through nine eleven. And this, this emergency that we're in now, I have nothing else to compare it to. So I want to thank all of our counselors for, for their yeoman work in, in, in picking up these challenging times and, and making good decisions. And I appreciate that. And I want to, I want to leave tonight with a very special thank you to the moms and dads and the kids who are home, who are home at school and going to school and moms and dads who are teaching school and, and trying to make a living and trying to support their families. It's a tough time out there. We will get through this. We will come out safer and stronger in the end. But I want to thank you all for, for being part of a community that cares about one another and, and does everything we can to keep ourselves, our, our families and our communities safe. So if there's no more business to come before the council, we will stand adjourned. Thank you all so much.